This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. We will open up this Thursday, August 15th, meeting for the City of Port Oxford Common Council at 5:30. We'll start with a call to order. It's gonna be a quiet pledge, but I'll still do it.
Pledge, please.
Yeah. Oh, and then I'll do the roll call.
You have me a little confused.
Yeah, me too.
It's okay.
Ah, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. I feel like we're better at that, Pat, under your guidance.
I don't know. It's because I started doing it quiet at first. I talked too loud and now I just follow along. It helps a lot.
Okay, quick roll call. Councillor Burns.
President.
Councillor Pogwidds.
Tim here.
Councillor Rask.
Here.
Councillor Velisis.
Here.
Councillor Webb. Councillor Tidy.
Pardon?
And I believe Councillor Webb will be here with us shortly. Okay, additions to the agenda? I don't believe we have any. And then the cons- oh, because there are no presentations, correct?
Correct.
This is, we're gonna-
Then I don't say it.
We're gonna really enjoy this meeting.
Don't say it.
Uh, the consent calendar, um, I personally, I, not the proclamation, I'm wondering if we should pull that out and read-
Yeah.
Just, you know, out of respect and the people put the time and effort into it. So that was the one thing I thought we should pull out. Or I could just read it right now really quick.
I have a few minor minutes, minute amendments too, so-
You do? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and then there's the right-of-way permits. Um, okay, so we'll just go through that right now. Minute corrections, we'll start with, Ann.
Yeah, I have a few minor corrections to the minutes that I'll go through. I sent these to Joseph ahead of time, but I'll just tell you what they are. On page seven, item 11, line 303, change one of the pumps at one of our utility stations to two of the VF drives at our wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
So that's, you know, a matter of correction. Um, page seven, item 12, strike for audience. Because it sort of sounds, anyway.
Oh.
And then-
Where was that at?
Uh, page seven, line 307.
I didn't hear the 307 part. Gotcha.
Yeah, I didn't quite, it's just a little, I think it's just clearer without that. I didn't understand that. Um, and then page eight, item 13D, watershed, strike, the dredging permit is still moving forward and replace that with still seeking funding sources to move ahead with dredging.
Anybody have anything else?
Can you make a motion?
On the right-of-ways, I don't know if everybody checked out Carleen's, she's just basically wanting to go up 16th, is what it looked like. I drove up there and Carleen Army.
Right, but hold on one second. I was meant, did anybody have any corrections on the minutes still?
Gotcha, gotcha.
Because what I'm thinking is, we, if they're all just, you know, clerical corrections, we can get those marked down by Joseph and then we can read this letter and then we'll talk about that right away and then go back to it hopefully and somebody will make a motion to accept the consent calendar with corrections. So any more changes on the agenda? Sorry, any more changes on the minutes? Okay, so then we will move on to the proclamation. Okay. And this is for the consideration of declaring, uh, where's the date on that? Okay. This is for-
What day are they asking to be declared? I can't-
That's what I was just-
I don't think it's in here, but was it? Because it's not her birthday anyway, so.
Right.
Oh, I forgot to turn my-
Saturday is the day they're doing it.
I believe the date that they want to set it as is the Saturday.
Okay.
That is the seven-
Seven. One second. Joseph, will you help Brett out? Get in.
It's the 17th.
The 17th, okay, good. Okay, well, now that we've established that, I will just go ahead and read this, uh, this letter by Heidi Foss about Joyce Mueller Day. Joyce Mueller, Port Oxford's centenarian, I don't know if I've said that before. If our village were an oyster, Joyce Mueller would be our pearl. As the oldest living resident of Port Oxford at age 100 and a half, she attributes her longevity to being mindful of a positive attitude toward life and importance of maintaining connections with family, friends, and community. She also recognizes that with longevity comes many fascinating stories to share. I should get glasses. Joyce Mueller is an author who has published a memoir and many short stories. Her memoir Never Cheat a Holy Man tells of her humorous, confusing, sometimes harrowing experiences while living in East Pakistan in the 60s. The book is available on Amazon, Google, Kindle, Winter River Books, and Banden, and our Port Oxford libraries. Born in 1923, the youngest of five siblings, Joyce was raised in Minot, Min- Minot?
Minot.
What's that?
Minot.
Minot. That's how it sounds. Uh, North Dakota. Her father, her father, she said, was her biggest influence in learning to express creativity through writing. As an educator and writer himself, he encouraged self-expression through writing and music. She recalls how she and her siblings shared stories and pictures at the dinner table. Often after dinner, the family would have music nights and sing-alongs. Joyce says all but our mother would sing or play an instrument. She insisted on being the audience for our harmonizing group. Joyce always wanted to be a nurse, so after high school and a year of college at Minot State Teachers College, studying pre-nursing, she went to Denver, Colorado to become a nurse at Denver's Children's Hospital. This was during the Second World War when nurses were much needed, so Joyce signed a contract promising to become a war nurse at the completion of her training. The trade-off was that the government paid for her education. Fortunately for her, the war ended just at the completion of her education and licensing. So instead of doing the military service, she joined matrimonial service. Joyce and her husband Dorsey raised three sons who helped their dad complete his studies to become a specialist teacher trainer. Ford Foundation hired him to start a teaching program in East Pakistan and the family lived in Dhaka and Lahore, West Pakistan, for the next six years. Joyce worked part-time as an American consulate nurse while learning to manage the household of all male Muslim employees. She has fascinating tales to relate about the years when Pakistan and India were in conflict. One time, she, with some of her American friends, were held at gunpoint, accused by Bengali soldiers of being spies. Eventually, most ex-patriot American, including Joyce and her son Steve, were evacuated to Philippines for the war's duration. Despite occasional narrow escapes and frequent exposure to serious tropical diseases, she found the country to be beautiful and the people just like people anywhere in the world. Kind, humorous, hardworking, curious, family-oriented, poverty-stricken. After six years in East and West Pakistan, the family returned to the United States and went their separate ways. Joyce later remarried in 1978 and she and husband Ken, a rice scientist, moved to Guadalcanal, Solomon Islands, to study rice problems there. After four years, they returned to California and Oregon. They settled into a happy home in Port Oxford in 1997. Ken died of cancer in 2001, leaving Joyce a widow who was spent time writing short stories and working on a memoir about the Solomon Islands. Despite a serious brain hemorrhage in 2001 and a recent concussion, Joyce has retained a sharp mind and able body for her 100 years. Her unstoppable gift for finding joy, gratitude, and love everywhere has been a blessing that she does not take for granted. Joyce was a part of the Bannon Writers Group until COVID interfered. She says her favorite aspect of writing is doing research and developing her characters. I hope that you have a chance to hear Joyce and read one of her short stories as she brings her words to life with vocal animation, body language, and a twinkle in her eyes. Okay, so the last part of the consent calendar would be this right-of-way request. Go ahead, Gary.
Um, it looked like she was just gonna extend 16th Street into the woods on the other side of Jefferson Street. And it didn't appear that it would affect anybody really, but, um, it is just cutting down the forest right there.
Yeah, but the conditions here say she can't cut any of the trees.
Any of the big trees.
And it does say a few of the larger trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the-
So his conditions were brush clear is fine, trees need to be marked and approved by Public Works prior to cutting.
Do you guys know what his criteria are for that? I mean, is he just kind of going out and using common sense about this is a big tree, we need to keep it, but it's, if it's in a roadway, I mean, that's kind of what I'm-
It's in an interesting spot. So Ms. Army invited Joseph and I out a couple of weeks ago to go look at the place and see because it was a concern about cutting down a bunch of trees and things like that. So her, her goal is to be able to get in there to see where she might be able to build possibly moving forward. And she has six lots actually in there, and so she can access one side of it, but she wants to go up where the 16th Street, the right-of-way, would be. And there are a few trees that are right on the property line, and so she wanted to have him come look, and he wants to go look before she would cut any of them down. So it's not gonna be a total clear-cut clearing, anything like that at all, is what she said. And so we want to make sure that she marks those, those are approved by Superintendent Isador, and then she would be able to get in there to see what she has, basically.
So the trees are on the right-of-way or the trees are on her lot?
On the right-of-way.
They, they're on the right-of-way, but they're right close to where she wants to be. So she's not trying to like swath out the entirety of 16th Street. That's not her goal. Her goal is to kind of clear out the part that's right near her property line on that edge to be able to get some access into there to be able to-
Yeah, we can't deny her access to her property, but, you know.
We, there's some history there with trees falling on Carlton's house.
There was, there were a tree that fell on her house, though.
Well, remember, remember, this was a few years back.
No, I do-
Yeah, and if we, if, if we want to be sure that if we send that out and it causes windfall, that, um, I would, I would suggest that the city would want to try to not be held responsible from a windfall if anything's cut out of there, the damages for property.
And I think that was why Superintendent Isador wanted to have them marked so he could get a very clear idea, because at this point she, she kind of showed a few trees that she might want to, to take down. But we wanted to make sure that he saw it and approved what was happening so that it was-
And we have ordinance also, right? Somewhere, somewhere, somewhere back, we have an ordinance that talks about, um, you know, a person being able to use our city streets if they put them and develop them a little bit. And I think you'll see evidence of that on maybe 16th or something around. Anyway, there's some, some, some streets around and I would say that as long as it complies with what's been written by those before us, then it's, we're doing it right.
And this complies? Because this is, like, trees are one of the main reasons that I felt like that the conversation started about the council reviewing the right-of-ways. It's because they're the type of thing that you can't put back. And we have had problems on the street with opening things up and making wind tunnels and having that conversation of who's responsible for this. So I, I always, I'm just thinking about the liability and like, we have somebody sign off on that tree, that puts us in this conversation of if there is a wind tunnel or something does happen in the future.
You mean if somebody signs off on cutting it or leaving it?
On cutting it. Like, say, and then, and then a tree down the hill blows down, which is a rotten tree that had absolutely nothing to do with, like, proximity, but it's still a conversation point that people across the street say, hey, you made this tree blow over in my yard.
Yep.
No, I think Oregon, I think Oregon's dealt with that in a fantastic fashion before of, of, whose wind caused what tree fall. But anyway, um, yeah, this is my suggestion was to be sure that we're complying with our own rules. Okay, thank you. I'm standing by.
I can hear that.
Yeah, it's almost, because like clearing brush and doing stuff like that, it's maintaining the right-of-way. It almost seems like it's just a non-issue. It's the trees and the ambiguousness of this. Like, in a perfect world, those trees would be marked out before we saw this on the map and we would know because that's the biggest deal about it.
Well, and it sounds like some of the ambiguity may be the location at the edge of the right-of-way, so that, that's-
And this is like up off the road. We're 90% sure nobody's gonna care. It's going to access property that she wants to develop, but it's the other five trees 20 years from now that are gonna be a fruit tree or contentious and like to keep it apples to apples, we just gotta make sure we do our due diligence on it. Which is not very hard to go mark out some trees.
But if it's a street, if it's a street, and you don't have, you know, we don't have trees in streets, you know? So, there you go.
So we don't have any problem with her clearing brush and we want her to mark the trees she wants to cut, right?
Before cutting. So you can look at it and have a clearer vision of what-
I would think that would be the time to apply was once she has the trees marked.
But are we setting the precedent for the rest of the tree right-of-ways that the head of Public Works is gonna make the call on? By like, by doing-
We've had foresters, if you recall, we've had foresters each come with differing opinions on, um, on, on trees and their health and, and their benefit or, or not. And those are, you know, professional foresters. So if, you know, I'm not saying John's not a, a heck of a tree lover or tree cutter or a tree knower, but that's a valid point that Pat makes is, um-
That's a good point to get somebody in, for her to get somebody in to make approval of cutting the trees. I don't know.
It always just goes back to covering our-
Because if we get some, a forester to sign off on it, then it's not the city's issue.
I think if it's in the street, as Brett is saying, you know, then it's-
Yeah.
Yeah, but that, that, we're not, that's a no-brainer. That, yeah, you would think that that would be kind of cleared already or you wouldn't want to like let trees start growing in your roads, but this is a right-of-way request. But like I say, it's not about this one. It's the process that we do and somebody down the road that's gonna say, oh, you did it.
Well, the, the process, I think, is lacking because we've had this come up before in that we don't have clear criteria. Like, you could take a page for other policies and people say, you know, if a tree is bigger than a certain size, then you can't cut it. Or if a tree is diseased or something, then you can cut it. You know what I mean? Like, so that it's not just John Isador or whoever the Public Works person is saying, oh, this is okay or this is not. It's like you have specific criteria.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be a better policy for us to have. This came up with, I know, like the watershed person who's doing a fire risk reduction, you know, and they have, they're doing some clearing of brush and limbing trees in right-of-ways to reduce fire risk. And, you know, she's going by the policy, you can't cut a tree. Well, is it a two-inch tree or is it a five-inch diameter? You know, so those are important.
A greenway policy, a greenway ordinance, you know, we talked about that, Ann. Maybe six years ago, we started our way into a greenway, a, a green, um, what do you call it? Greenway? Is that what it is? A greenway, um?
I think that's what we call it.
You remember that, Tim?
Yeah, it was, it was a Madrona tree blow down after-
Yeah, correct.
Dollar General cleared their lot, all the trees in the RV park blew down and brush trailers and propane blew up.
So they're out there. They're out there and I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel to follow we, or the mouse app, either one. But we could find something and go, you know, that might be helpful for us. I don't know. Okay.
Yeah, but the question I have is, you know, Pat is saying if we make this decision, is it precedent-setting? I, I kind of feel like we could make this decision, but then we'll come back and revisit that other question later. I mean, do you think that's not right? Because, I mean, we have this ahead of us right here. It's a right-of-way. Doesn't seem like it's that complicated.
We're approving a brush removal and like Pat said, brush removal is something we're supposed to be doing on the right-of-ways anyway. So I don't see a problem with that portion of it, but the trees, I don't even really see a problem with the tree, uh, issue either because we have to allow her to have access to her property. I don't know if there's other access. I have no idea.
Jefferson Street's also kind of developed right there.
Right.
So that's where her access is.
I've been there, I know, but I mean, I just can't remember.
No, and I, yeah, it makes perfect sense. No, I, yeah, but I'm just saying that this document to me is pretty ambiguous. It's a few larger trees. So if we okay it, that means you can take a few larger trees that you choose out, which, and it does it, but it does read, you know, the, 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 the public works, but that's not lined out for us.
Then if she-
There's no like marking of like, we don't know what we're doing other than we are authorizing John to make the calls and that's not fair to him.
Without having a diameter that you just tape it and this one stays and this one goes or any, any of them less than whatever it serves.
It's in the tree, though. It, remember that one? I mean, it is in the street and I think that she could probably just ask us to clear the road so that she could be able to get a, a moving van in there. Or, you know what I mean? It's, that, you know, it's, it's like, um, I understand what everybody's saying, but again, it's just, it's the middle of the street and if it's, if it's plotted at 90 feet or 60 feet wide, then, then there's your, um, you know.
But just to clarify, Brett, it, the, the trees would be in the right-of-way, not the actual street.
Oh, okay. Copy, okay, correct, yep.
And it's just, I mean, it's just a forest. Like I say, it's, it doesn't, uh-
Because it isn't a city street.
I mean, what if there's a load of logs that fell right there? Nobody's ever gonna-
Or what if it's just like primo owl habitat?
But right, that's what I mean.
Everybody in the neighborhood likes to hear the owls.
Exactly the kind of pitfalls that somebody's gonna come out of the woodworks after the egg is already broken. We've had it happen before and we didn't set the policy then. And that's the little like voice in the back of my head is like, oh no, we're, we're doing it again, but-
But, you know, we have so many cities that are like, that we're not clear on. We have like a, an arm's length list of it. So we, it's kind of tough to not be able to move ahead on anything because of that. Um, and so it's almost like we need to put that on the list and bring it back and get to it at some point, you know?
It'd be so simple just to have a diameter of tree.
Well, and for this one to like, because we don't want to slow people down and be like, go ahead and start clearing the property, make it nice and open, mark the trees that you want to take down, we'll revisit it. Sorry, we can't do it this month and we didn't have the information that the council needed.
I feel comfortable with that if that's what you want to do.
Well, what if John just went up and just flagged the ones that can't be cut and that's done deal?
But what if the next John is, it just hates trees?
That's the problem is it's not about John.
Yeah, that's the problem, right.
Position. It's not like, and like Brett said a couple of times, there's nothing, John, John might be the most knowledgeable tree guy in the world, but that doesn't mean we want to set somebody up for a situation of a tree that's been cut down five feet on somebody else's property that the city's on the hook for.
Yeah, it's just not fair to put our guy in that, in that position. I mean, it's best to have our administration administer our policy and not the other way around.
So I think that's what I would entertain is tell her that, yeah, everybody should be more than welcome to clear their own right-of-way and maintain their right-of-way or clear out our streets of brush. The trees are the only-
Well, think of fires, you know? Think of a fire, think of a wildfire. And, and that's something that maybe we should think about a little bit more than we do. I mean, I've seen pictures of, of the, of the town after the fire and it was terrible looking.
So we should probably just tell her, go ahead and clear the brush, mark your trees and then reapply when you have-
Yeah.
Trees that we know.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think that's-
Get the mark in the box from John, but, uh, so, I mean-
Maybe between now and then we can try and get a policy together.
I already written on it, yeah. Have them mark it. We could all look if we want.
And we gotta look at our tree policy too. I think we might have some more teeth than we think, but I'm not 100%.
So this diameter of trees, are we talking diameter trees on right-of-ways or diameter trees on private property?
No, right-of-ways.
Okay.
Tim, you're always messing with people's private property.
I'm just kidding. I was joking.
A guy wants to build a house and he has 13 trees in the ways. What are you gonna do?
Right, yeah. No, but that's like, this is government. We're not talking common sense. We're talking about a process to avoid something that might happen in 15 years. It's like, we're getting into that sticky-
Common sense, though.
I know, it works against you.
Was Dollar General-
Tim loves trees too, trust me.
Was Dollar General on the hook for that?
Too many trees. No, they weren't. As far as I know, there was no, uh, legal action taken.
Okay, so I think we have a clear direction on the right-of-way. I would, uh, I would entertain a motion to accept items A and B of the consent calendar with the adjustments to the minutes, minutes as stated.
So moved.
Uh, so moved. Oh, there we go. I'll second that, Ann.
Okay, so we got a first and a second. Any more discussion on those items? She's good to clear. We just need to, yeah, on A and B. Okay, we got, I'm gonna call for the vote. Councillor Tidy?
Yes.
Councillor Rask?
Yes.
Councillor Burns?
Yes.
Councillor Webb?
Webb, yes.
Councillor Velisis?
Yes.
Councillor Pogwidds?
Tim, yes.
Okay, and then item C, we got a consensus on how to move forward on that. Free to clear. We just need a little more direction on trees because of the process, not because of the project. All right, so moving on, citizen concern.
Just to, just to clarify.
Finish up. Okay, you clarify first.
I'm just making sure, so, so she's okay to clear the other things, but we're not gonna allow her to cut the tree until more people see it and decide it?
Well, it's marked, till the trees are marked, right? That's-
Mark the tree she wants to cut and reapply.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. Reapply for the tree portion. We approve the brush portion.
Do you guys want me to just do a little research and bring, bring some basic like criteria? I mean, super simple, I'm thinking, you know, just like-
Yeah, we don't have anything on our books right now.
No, it just says trees. It says you can't cut trees without permission. And so, so it's, so, I mean, that does give, if we, if we adopt the policy that everybody's gonna mark the tree and bring it to city council and all the city councillors get to go and look, then that passes a, that's a kind of gut feeling test that we would all be able to say, oh, that one, that neighbor's gonna, you know, we could look at it. Or we could come up with something that says if it's over, you know, 15 inches or eight, whatever the, the number is that makes sense, um, that then you have to take it to city council.
But I would just hope that city council, if we come up with this diameter, let's say it's 15 inches, I would just hope that we could use common sense because there are trees on our right-of-way that are danger trees. I have three in front of my property. Um, they're grown up into the lines that are pushing the, um, not Kuzco electric because they trim, but the Verizon lines, um, the charter lines, they're just pushing hard on those limbs.
Right.
I mean, they're, and these trees are deformed and one of them is a bull pine that's like this big round and it's a danger tree and-
So do you want to not, not do, consider criteria and just do with this process that we're talking about?
I do. I just want us to keep, keep in mind that there're gonna be trees that are gonna be bigger than 15 inches that for other reasons are gonna need to be cut. That's all I'm saying.
I think it would be more like you'd, you'd have a criteria where it'd be like, if it's bigger than this, you have to bring it to city council. And if it's under this, then-
Right, but if it's a danger tree on the city right-of-way and the city remove, needs to remove it, then we don't need to get our own right-of-way. You know what I mean? Like, that's something that the crew can go-
That's, that's what happened. That's what happened with, with, uh, Carleen and the staff. I mean, it was, it was a street, remember? There was this tree on city property in the right-of-way.
A for.
And she wanted, she wanted to take it down, right? And we said we'd pay her so much and she wanted a little more or something, but that, you know, yeah, oh, okay, yeah. We've been, I think it's a great idea for Ann to take a look at some of the, um, common sense, green ordinance-type languages that are out there and come back with the recommendation. I think she's perfect for that job.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
And there's foresters that might be able to be used for their opinion.
Yep.
Yep.
I spy with my little eye.
Seems like Cliff Stensel used to do that or-
Yeah, he's a great person to ask. I'll ask. And I can ask that watershed. I mean, there, there's, there's stuff out there. It's, we don't have to reinvent the wheel or make anything up. It's, so-
Yeah, it's more of just the checks and balances than anything.
Help with that obviously too, yeah.
It's when, even the forester comes into play when there's, um, a disagreement over the health of a tree that might fall onto it. You know what I mean? It's that type of thing. A forester, I don't think it could be too helpful in policymaking, but it could look at an individual tree and say that tree is a danger tree because of the advocacy. I think that's what I've seen in the past, but, um, you'll figure that out, Ann. Thank you.
Yep. I have developed, I have helped to develop one of these before in a different context with a forester friend, so I, I think I can-
Oh, fabulous.
Give us some info.
Fabulous.
Okay. Okay. So now we can move on to citizen concerns.
The other one-
What about the other right-of-way?
The other right-of-way.
And, and I do see a-
Oh, darn it, I'm sorry. I know, I knew that too. I've been staring at him and I knew.
So I would make-
And this is one of those ones where it's like, well, like, I get the email, it's like, well, yeah, and it's like, oh, darn it, no, Pat, you're the one that's always like saying we gotta go through the process. So this is more, this is actually a better-
I would make a motion to- I would make a motion to approve this particular right of way, just to open it for discussion, but I do have a problem with it.
I'll second that motion.
The problem I have is our process, which basically says the license, license. I'm not gonna be able to say that word today, confirms that they're the owner of the property adjacent to the city right of way. And I don't know if this person is the owner of the property adjacent to the right of way. So, but I do know, removing these, uh, sudden oak death trees are super, super important. To our whole county, so. Well, they're gonna come and do all the trees, the trees on our property.
You don't mind coming up and stating your name, sir?
They can hear you through that online.
Oh, they gotta be.
They're gonna do. I understand what they're gonna do. If it's approved by an owner. But they don't meet this agreement, number one, so are we gonna forego that?
Well, I'm Randy Wees, I'm the, uh, with the Oregon Department of Forestry Sudden Oak Death Program.
Correct.
Uh, for any work on private owners, we have to have their consent.
Okay.
So we go through and, um, in the particular area we're asking for, we've contacted all of the landowners and are getting their consent.
Okay.
Great, I'm so glad to know that.
But our process still is that you have to be, in order to apply for this, you have to be the owner of the property. Adjacent to this area, that's the only question I have, it's just a formality, right?
I would assume so.
It's one of our, it's one of our regulations.
Yeah.
Am I the only one seeing it?
I, I see what you're saying, but I think we maybe should just make a little, uh, exception in this case because.
I agree wholeheartedly, I just wanted to point out that that is our process, so.
And in this case, because you are getting the, um, consent, which I'm glad to hear, uh. In this case, each person wouldn't be able to do it, um, the Department of Forestry is really helping, yeah, to do it.
I totally understand all that and I think that's really good and we appreciate what you're doing, so.
So should we amend in the agreements in number one, we can say licensee confirms that they have the consent of the owners of the property?
Uh, well, but. I, we, I don't think we can, I don't think we can vote to change our right of way permit right here. We're just gonna have to go around that number one, I guess.
Well, for this, we, but we could change it for this particular one, given that it's the emergency of sudden oak death.
Correct, correct.
And that we're dealing with a credible.
I think that needs to be in the motion.
Hold on guys, the, right under the main title, it says city ordinance, chapter twelve twenty-four, that's a whole different animal. That, that's things you can't ambiguously change.
Exactly.
Let's see, we'll look it up.
Okay, I need to take this up. I'm not doing with you, buddy.
I, it's just.
No, it's.
It's policy, it's what it is, it's, once again, you approve it for someone and the next person wants it is the issue. I want you to take care of these trees, but I also want to do it in a manner that we can. I, I don't know if the city needs to be the applicant.
Or ultimately, if there's another process to go through, that would get cities' approval to do the work on the city property. That's generally what I'm looking for with that application.
Right.
Okay, there's some, there, I think there's some things here that might be relevant, I'm just gonna read them as I go.
Okay.
The city has jurisdiction and exercises regulatory control over all public rights of way within the city. Or control overall and exercise regulatory control under the authority of the city charter and state law, okay, scope. Has full scope obtained, you know, so it goes through all different things, um.
Could we just add our name beside his name and I think that would fix this problem?
One second, let me just finish looking at this to see. The city grants permission to use, let's see, obligations. Any person who by any me, any person who by any means causes or aids in the removal of trees from city property. Without first obtaining permission is guilty of a violation. But, um, it's the duty of the owner or the person in charge of the property that abuts the right of way to maintain vegetation and trees. Um, to not create a hazard and to contract the city administrator to obtain permission and follow the city's instructions. So in this case, it's the duty of the owner or the person in charge, um, to maintain, to not create a hazard. So in this, it's almost as if by giving the consent to ODF, the person in charge is. Mr. Wees? Is kind of, I mean, that ODF is possibly meeting that requirement in that way?
As the person in charge.
If it's the duty of the, of the owner or the person in charge, um, to obtain permission and follow the city's instructions. So it's kind of like, this application is trying to get that for a series of owners. But.
Have you gotten permission from all of the property owners and that, did, has anybody not given you permission?
No, we don't have permission from everyone, we've gotten a number of people, I was, um. In some of those little residential blocks, we never did receive consent forms back, um, and haven't con, followed up with contacts with them.
So what was your idea, Tim, to put, put there?
Well, I was, I, so at first, I was thinking we could do, uh, Randall Wees, we're gonna Department of Forestry, Forestry South slash City of Port Orford. But then that's gonna throw us in on it, on the hold harmless clause, that puts us. You know, let's just say they were, I don't know what you do, you spray, you cut, you.
You'll cut.
So.
In this case, we won't be doing herbicide, we've been, uh, on the city property where it's along a paved road, we would cut.
Okay.
And any material that falls on, you know, would come into the paved road, it would be hauled off to CTR.
Okay.
If it's back in the undeveloped right of ways, we'd wanna lop it up, pile it, then winter burn it.
Okay.
I wonder if we could say that we approve it on the contingency that there's written approval by each of the property owners. Just to take the liability off of us, cause that's what we're trying to avoid. Um, but it's still con, you know, contradicts number one, but if they did have the written permission, then that would. Kind of necessitate number one, I don't wanna put more work on anybody, but if you already handed those flyers, I, I mean, I, you understand where we're at. It's just the paper, the, the liability of it and the paperwork of it, it's just hard when we're doing it against something that's founded.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't really want applications from that many owners either.
The, the code, the code gives the city the authority. The, so, you know, the agreement, the license implements the code. So I don't know if the application form specifics are, you know, like how. They're like the, the regulation as opposed to the law, you know, or they're like, how, they're the bureaucratic. In, uh, infrastructure to carry out the law, so if we're carrying out the law, if we have jurisdiction. Let's say, instead of doing this right of way permit that, uh, Randy and ODF came in like last time, that I think you guys came. Cause there were some trees in the park and just said, hey, we have this crisis and we need to do some work on your property. City of Port Orford, you own it, and we said, okay, we will allow it, you know? It's a little, it's sort of like, you can think of it in a framework that's not just right of way too.
Oh, right, it's a city property.
Yeah, I don't know.
When it's a property owner asking, then it's, we're, they, they don't own the property and they're. It's something for their own concern, where this is the safety of the city.
Right.
Cutting the trees off of our property and they're getting permission from private owners.
The people that abut, the owners that abut our right of way, yeah.
But even if they don't approve, it's still our property and it's still us saying that that, that's a safety issue. And we need the trees cut and ODF is willing to do it.
Right, like another way to approach it would be, like, for example, we, we went into that memorandum of, of understanding with. Curry Soil and Water Conservation District to do fire risk reduction, so they are doing. They are removing brush and cutting some trees or limbing trees on our right of ways. And they're not coming in to get these permissions all the time, but we have a kind of a memorandum of understanding with them that. Because they have a grant to help us reduce fire risk, that we're kinda deferring to their expertise and judgment, so I wonder.
Really not the, um, intent of what our ordinance is for right of way approval.
Yeah.
Because it's just dealing with the city property, they're dealing with the private owners and they're, when us. It's really not a right of way permit, in my mind, in a way.
Cause it's not the owner asking, can I use, use your land?
Here's the problem I see in that. So. Then the next person comes and says, hey, you let that guy cut trees in the right of way. I figured I could cut trees in the right of way and a guy cuts a whole block of trees down that's in the right of way, then what do we say? But that's not to the benefit of the city and we haven't made the decision to, for him to do that. I, but it's still the same thing, in my opinion, it's the same exact thing. It's, I, maybe we don't need a right of way permit to do this. That's what I'm saying. Yeah.
Cause there's six.
I would, I would lean more towards that than.
Yeah, and then just go with the administrator.
Yep, yep, that's my personal opinion on that. Yeah. I, there's, there's just too much that goes against in this, in this document. And it's really not. We made it. And it's not really a right of way permit that they're asked, it's a different.
Yeah, but then are we putting it all on the administrator instead of us when this incident that we're trying to avoid comes up?
What instant? But that they would have to come through me and ask before.
Well, like, say we, we okay to cut these, these oak trees down, it's adjacent to somebody's property, they claim, come in, say, you, you cut my tree down. You were, you, you know, it, the city was, you know, line one, do you guys then confirm that me as the owner was, were, was okay with this? That's the only angle.
What we're asking is maybe part of the agreement that they do get the consent of owners and my understanding, cause I know some people who are really, don't like. You guys cut their trees, who are opposing it and you're not going on and cutting peoples, on people's.
No, in fact, in that unit, we do have one landowner's, uh, refused consent, we're just, we're not gonna do anything. Yeah, well, it is, well, I mean, there's, there's, there's things that could be done, but we've decided that they're on the edge of the treatment. You know, it's, would make the situation worse to try to go forward on their property and they have very few tan oaks, so.
And this is another thing maybe to think about, um, moving forward, is I know like the first time when, I think this came up when we had administrator Huddle here. There were a couple of trees and he said, well, this time I'm gonna make an administrative decision and let council know and do it, but come back if there's bigger areas. And this may be a bigger area, but there could be more and more and more, so.
The disease is moving into Port Orford, I mean, that's especially on lake shore.
Right, so we may need to, I mean, you're bringing us now a new map, we, we may have to get clear, clearer on this process. It may be that it's a, like, we do, we develop a memorandum of understanding. Or we ask you to come back and bring the information, just so we have the opportunity for citizens to see the map and stuff like that. You know, different, maybe.
Cause what, what if we went to ODF and asked them to cut the trees off of our right of way?
What about, what about, um, um, eminent domain type thing, when we're talking about the disease, it's potentially. We've got, you know, guys working to put it down all around and then we've got, you know, I mean, I'm not a big fan of. Government doing things on private property unless it's, uh, you know, an emergency or to a huge public benefit, but. Um, is that not what we're trying to talk about?
No, right of way, city property.
I understand that, that's, but we, governments generally have the power to, um, uh, invoke. Eminent domain and do what we want with somebody's property and we, it would have to compensate them, I guess, if that's. It might be what the, the guy from O, O, uh, Department of Forestry is referring to, the things that we could do, but it's gonna get worse. I, I, I just think that, you know, it's gonna get worse, we got a big stand of it, there's, say there's ten acres of. Twenty acres of an issue and you got one guy in the middle that refuses or something, you know, what do you do? That's why the eminent, eminent domain thing was, came to mind.
It's a danger or, I mean.
Greg, you had your hand up.
Well, I know for a fact, like, Buffington has nine or ten trees that just popped up over this last year that I've noticed and I've been marking. But that, I, um, didn't need to get removed, it's on city property, obviously, you know? At least nine new ones within this, this year have popped up.
So, are we overthinking this? Could the city give permission to take on the right of way? Like, I mean, it's kind of between the landowner, no, it's not, it's on our right of way, so there is a little stickiness to it. We are overthinking it, but it's, this is exactly the problem, all wrapped up in a nutshell. We have a private person that wants to do the same thing that an entity wants to do, it's a good cause for the entity, but it's the same question, it's the same thing and.
The private person's not taking down sudden death, sudden tan death, or, you know, the oak, tan, she wants to clear it for other reasons. He's clearing it for a disease, it's completely different, completely wildly different to me.
They're doing, they're doing the city a favor.
No, I agree, I'm not arguing that point with you at all, I'm worried about the, the other side of the coin, the people that are gonna come back at the city, like.
Well, I think that if we have, I, I think if we approach it more as an agreement rather than this. But I do appreciate that you've brought us the map and stuff, cause then I think then it gives citizen, and that you've come. Cause it then gives citizens the opportunity to come and say, oh, my goodness, what's going on and for you maybe to help us and explain it and understand it, you know?
Yeah, and moving, you know, when I was asking permission to work on city, I knew you would want specific areas as opposed to just a blanket.
Right.
When do you wanna start the work or did you wanna start it a month ago?
We have a good bit of that unit ready to go, uh, I mean, it's not something I have to start tomorrow, but. Um, we would like to at least work on it probably this fall, I mean.
Oh, but that's okay, that's a huge, that's a gain for us, cause then we can maybe gain on this process a little bit, but I hate to deny it. And I'm not saying it's not a good thing to get rid of these oak trees, it's just ironic that it's.
I, I think that, that what, what Wiz is saying is, is just right, that this, this process, this form is really for the adjacent landowner. It's not for this case that we have.
That's what I, that's.
And so this case that we have could maybe be better rectified with a memo of understanding, which may be as simple as a letter.
Yes.
That says, you know, Department of Forestry wants to do this because X, Y, and Z.
Right.
The city understands this, that our concerns are to make sure that you, you know, um. Consider landowners or that you get landowners consent, that you keep us posted, that, um.
Would, would that be, uh, MOU that administrator would approve or the council would approve?
I think the council would approve it then.
Yeah, it's a contract, so it would be council, but that would streamline things for you too, as far as the.
I can offer to, normally when we contact landowners, we have a consent form and that's what I have to have written consent to work on their property. And that would be something I could submit to you, uh, you could then approve it if you agree to the project. The other part with our consent form is you can revoke it whenever you feel like or add in, you know, any constraints. And as I usually tell people, if I have really have a lot of heartburn with something, I'll call you and we'll talk it over.
So you won't move forward without written permission?
No, I have to have written permission.
Written permission, see, that's what I wasn't clear on before, it sounded like, when, when you said you didn't have all of them yet, I, I read that wrong. But if you have to have written permission, that covers us, so.
Well, it's written permission from us, though.
Written permission for you, for your project, for your property, and then we go to each landowner and get it for every landowner. Couldn't his consent form be signed by Melissa with the few items you listed, we'd be done with the damn thing?
That's what I would say, the only thing I would want is that you have the landowner permissions, which you have based on your policy and your situation. Or you're not gonna work there, and so we're just saying, please take care of this problem that is on our property, which is right of way. With the permission of the adjacent landowner, so if you prove, if you show us the adjacent landowner has approved it, then it does seem like a pretty straightforward situation.
So, we, we're going to let the adjacent landowner trump the owner? In a decision on the trees cut?
He said he has to have the, the adjacent.
Cut on their personal property.
Work on their property, every landowner, I have to have their permission to work on their property.
Right.
It's us in the right of way.
We are.
The landowner.
You're the landowner for the right of way.
The other, the adjacent is, yeah, we are the landowners adjacent to that property, just not on both sides.
Right.
And the only other thing, I mean, I think we're on the right path here and the only other thing I would bring up, and this is, I think, what Mr. Huddle brought up last summer. Is the idea that if we're gonna cut down all the trees in Port Orford, or, you know, if it's gonna get so bad that we're gonna really be. If we're going to cut down all the trees in Port Orford, or you know, if it's going to get so bad that we're going to really be changing things. That we might want to know that, or we might need to have a community discussion about that, not that maybe we're going to make a different decision. But that, you know, that people may need to understand that better and or we may want to ask the Department of Forestry, well, what do you recommend? We, what, what's going to come in the wake of cutting all these, you know, we, we may need to have a little bit of a deeper conversation. If it's, if the scale gets bigger and bigger.
Yeah, I, I can understand that. Um, a lot of the policies and ramifications, we'd probably want our pathologist to talk with you about that. They're the ones who ultimately generate the prescriptions.
Yep. And I, I.
I'm sorry.
I just, I read this odd working group stuff, so I pay attention. Sorry Brett, yeah.
No, I, I'm just, you know, just honestly as you can, but is, is your treatment working? Or can we expect this to take small patches of our community one piece at a time and, and um, because. Uh, you know, I worked on white cedar um cruise twenty five years ago and. Packing white cedar out and then ended up all over the roads and then we had to do all, worked on the side of the roads and, and you know, it was kind of a, a thing. And I'm just wondering, are, are you more confident with, with the prescription that's, that's offered and then taking?
I mean, we've obviously been doing a lot of work up here. It's been a, I will say it's been a bad year for disease spread, so it's, it's a mixed bag, is to be honest. Yeah, we found a number of sites this, uh, this last year, particularly in Hubbard Creek, China Mountain area. It's just a.
Yeah. So that might be, I mean, I'm just like thinking ahead. We might, yeah, want to have a conversation with you about what are we going to do in the wake of this and what do you recommend? And you know, can we get grants as a city to work on doing reforestation of different trees? Or I don't even know what the, what the, I'm just raising this long term, that this, this one little step is kind of probably a bigger piece of something to come. So. But I think we're on the right path of what we described.
Will you eventually want to just go through and do the whole town, the whole area? Is that?
Well, right now, so a lot of our treatments are constrained by how much money we have. So we prioritize the sites and I work my way through the priorities. And it's also a matter of, you know, we only have so many people working on it, so it's. Yeah, um, I mean, right now, we've been. Basically, anyone who's ever seen north of Arizona or Paradise Point knows we've done a lot of work up there. Um, we've done a bit of work in Lake Shore. That's frankly, uh, California Street off of Lake Shore. It's not looking particularly good at the moment. Looks pretty bad, frankly. So there are pockets of disease that are in the town. There's large areas that aren't affected. Uh, on the east side, up on Dee Dee Street where we're asking to do this project, we have a few trees. It's not been. The worst site going, but.
Is it wet, the wetness or something? Is it, is it the?
So what happens, uh, what we think happens, um, is within this last winter and the winter before. It's been a average rainfall, which is decently wet. And that promotes the spread of the disease. So we usually see a little bit of a lag. We'll see a wet. Particularly a wet spring and then a year to two years later, we start seeing more sites pop up. That's just been the history of how it goes. Uh, we were lucky for a number of years, we had more drought conditions. And the disease was um, not expanding as much.
And our, our, our state senator. Has been key in, in the funding for these projects. Is that correct?
Excuse me, I didn't catch that.
Hard to hear you, Brett.
Okay, I'm sorry. Has Senator Smith been key in, in funding your projects and, and uh, he's been really good about that, has he not?
Yeah, he has been particularly, uh, the last two cycles, I believe he's gotten a similar neighborhood of a million and a half in a biennium, so. He's a.
Thank you.
He's a strong supporter of the program and has done very well.
The memorandum and the M O U is big too on the burning side of things, because that is something that's restricted in Port Orford. So that's another conversation.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm aware.
But that just ties in with the M O U and M O U, I think will help everybody like get this. It's not going to be like, we can't even get over the easy right of way, but it seems like it would be less cumbersome. But how do we get through this?
I think we get, I think you give us your permission form, we look at it, we've talked about some of the concerns. I hadn't remembered the fire part, because I thought you were going to bring it all off to your, or most of it possible.
When I'm in town and I'm adjacent to a paved road where I have access, yeah, we've been hauling it to C T R. Uh, unfortunately, for some of these right of ways, they're basically undeveloped woods.
Yeah, which is.
You know, which then becomes a whole different animal of getting it out of the woods to a trailer to haul it off to C T R.
And you want to burn it in place.
Yeah, where if it's along a paved road, I have absolutely no problems putting it in a trailer and hauling it.
Well, and I don't think we have a problem with burning it in place as long as we're following burn permit. Con, you know, that it's not going to be a hundred piles and smoke out our town or something, you know?
But I just mean, our ordinance is like a four by four pile. It's not practical for that type of work. It's like a four by four caged area. It's like, so.
So can we, but can we put that in the memorandum?
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, there's so many parts outside of this that that's the only way I see it working cleanly is with something like that.
Another option we might have, uh, because I don't think the tan oak in this particular area is too heavy, is we could lop and scatter it. So we cut the trees down, cut them up in little chunks and just scatter it out and let it decompose.
And that doesn't scatter the disease? The disease?
No, so the most, uh, most of the treatment for the disease is getting the crown of the tree down out of the air. Because it's up in the crown being spread by spores. The burning, uh, you know, we lop it up, pile it and burn it partly to clean up a property. You know, it's especially if you say in a tano, people don't want to go have slash three foot deep on their.
You guys have done amazing work. Where I've seen out on by Gold Road and stuff, it, it.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, some of that was a machine job, um, where they took an excavator around, stacked it up and burned it.
That does.
In my experience, that whole lop and spread, I mean, things do really decompose here when you're so close to the coast. It's, you know, so that either of those, I think, could be good.
That is an option I do have. I mean, I have some latitude to alter up the prescriptions a little bit based on the sites and concerns. And you know, for us really cutting the tree down is the biggie.
I think if we, for, to move forward with the memorandum, I think if you could just outline based on our conversation, look at your agreement. And maybe put forth a letter of what you'd want to do and then maybe Melissa, you could work on it. And then we could bring it back and hopefully, you know, make recommendations based on what you've heard.
We could make a decision on it, maybe.
We can move forward with that. I mean, that I think seems like a good process and then you'd have it.
Very complicated, really.
Yeah, and then we'd have it lined up for the next time or, you know, we'd say we'd like you to bring maps or, you know, or be available to ask. Does that sound like a, do you have other municipalities that have a similar situation and an M O U that you have already in place? Anything like that?
No, not per se. Uh. No, we've always approached it property by property, to be honest. Uh, Gold Beach, we haven't had to deal with them in that regard. Brookings, anything that was done, they did do work in Azalea Park, but to be honest, that was before my time with O D F. I am not, they probably went through the same process of a consent form, city getting their permission.
That was an extremely contentious uh, process, if I recall correctly.
Yes, that treatment and I, I've reputedly have heard that the Azalea Park one was not a particularly popular action.
Yeah, that's a good way to put that one there.
If we could move it ahead faster, if there was already language set by someone or that we had a jumping off spot, that would make sense.
No, not, uh, I, no, we haven't entered into any agreements with the cities per se.
Okay, I think it could be pretty darn simple. We've talked about, you know, the things that need to be part of it and um.
It's almost like we could give them the blanket, okay, on this right of way, but we, you know, you need to have those letters of permit. That's the thing is we're adjacent, but it's the other adjacent people we're worried about. Is that one in a hundred person that's going to come back on the city and say, you cut down my oak tree, but it's not their oak tree. It's Tim's fault.
Well, Tim's saying, and I, and I agree that, that we're, if, if, you know, imagine property owner telling you that you don't like the, the color of his, of your house. Well, I'd like to paint it green. I can't paint it green. I don't like green. It, it's just, you know, consent from a neighbor. So what were the other, I, I just hate the idea of leaving something, one little piece, you know? It seems um, definitely counterintuitive to, to, to think that that's going to work. It would be, I, I don't know. It, it just doesn't make sense to me. I don't. What, you talked about some things that you could do and, and what were those things? Were they biggies or, I mean?
Were you concerned that the, the single landowner that has said no, that that will spread more and that's your concern, Brett?
Well, I mean, that's, I think the entire premise that we're working on is that if we remove this, it won't spread. And we're, you know, um, we have resources uh, in the area doing that thing. And I just, I, for the life of me, I can't understand why someone would not want.
I think it's not our purview. I mean, I think if Department of Forestry would have the authority if somehow. I mean, they would have it if we, we don't have it if they don't have it.
Well, to be, to be honest, this is an Oregon Department of Agriculture quarantine. If we have someone saying, we try really hard to convince them to work with us. If they still say no, we refer it to O D A and they ultimately, if they deem they want to go through the hassle. Can get a administrative warrant to go on the property and do a treatment. We usually are really extremely reluctant to go that process. Cause it burns a lot of bridges, bad P R. So we only do it when we absolutely positively want to get on that property and do a treatment. In the case of this one landowner, they're on the very edge. They have very few tan oaks. Um, you know, I mean, they're nearly six hundred feet away from the infected tree that's closest to them. So the, the likelihood it's infected drops significantly the further out towards the edge of the treatment you get.
But I don't think it's, I don't think we can do anything about that ourselves or that we should take that one on. I think we can just do this agreement. And hopefully move forward. Okay, it's on my list. If, I guess you have to have a motion or something.
We need a motion or consensus?
I think, I think, I think we should let Melissa be able to sign this document. But if we want to give stipulations, we need to give her, give them to her right now, whatever they may be.
So you think we should hammer out what we want to see in it right now?
Why wait another month and hold this gentleman up? They want to go to work. He's got a crew ready to work. Let's, I think let's give her our concerns. And then on that agreement, there'll be listed those concerns. I don't think there's very many.
Right. Okay, what if we, we, we've listed a bunch of them so far. We want to have um. We want them to notify adjacent property owners, which they're doing anyway, because they're.
They're already got that covered, sounds like.
And we're not requiring.
But they're not.
Just notifying them.
They're getting permission when they go onto private property to cut those trees on private property. They're coming to ask. If they can cut trees on our right of way and the conflict is that this says the adjacent property owner needs to get permission. And that's the rub is because it's our right of way, but there are adjacent property owners. But this whole form was built with a different intention than what we have in front of us.
Yeah, and that's what number one is really messing with.
But the word that you read easier, it's like, so we throw this away and then this gentleman comes in and talks to the administrator and, and they sign off on it. But because of the tree language, that's not really fair to Melissa either.
Well, but the, the, what I'm trying to get at is if we could have in this memorandum, that our expectation of O D F. Is they notify the adjacent landowner. So while they're notifying the landowner. That they're probably going to do the treatment on their land. They say we're going to be doing the treatment on the right of way. This is what's in the memorandum with the Soil and Water Conservation District. When they're doing fire risk reduction on our right of ways, they have to notify that a person next door. So Melissa doesn't get a call of like, oh my God, there's somebody out here cutting down my trees.
Right. The city has approved us to cut on the right of way.
Yeah.
We might be able to use that document for most of this, it sounds like.
Yeah, we could use parts of that, I'm sure. So that's one criteria, one, I'm just going through the things we've discussed. And what is that for? I'm sorry. That's the M O U, the M O U with the Soil and Water Conservation District, which I have in my files. I'm sure you have it somewhere, but I might be able to. Sure it's somewhere in that. I might be able to find it more easily than you do. Yeah. Um, so there's some language there we could probably use. We talked about bringing. The appreciating and bringing maps, identifying the areas to us. I mean, I don't know how this is going to unroll, if it's going to be like you're going to have a project area, then in six months will be another one, or if this is. Is that cumbersome to you to be able to come and inform us about what's happening?
No, not per se. I mean.
Yeah.
I can generate a map that says I would like to go do the project in this area and submit it to you along with consent form and if you have any questions.
Yeah, we could ask you, the expectation would be like, you know, we ask you to submit that information and be available to council. If we need more information or something.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
And then what else did we say were our concerns?
Application's complete. It's just, we're hung up on number one, really.
But we're talking about not doing this application, doing a memorandum of agreement.
I agree.
And then the other part of the memorandum would be about fire and how the materials are going to be removed. And that you would identify three methods that we've discussed. Um, bringing it to C T R, burning in place, but it has to be somehow.
Four by four piles. They couldn't just, you could just make four, didn't you do that at Out of Paradise, pretty much?
Yeah, hand piles tend to be decently small. They're not.
Cause you want to be able to control them.
Well, yeah, that and the practicality of building. I mean, I got guys building them by hand. It's, uh, we can't move logs, so.
Right.
So if, if that size is fine, that's great because it's in our ordinance, so that's no big deal. If we needed it to be a little bit different. We could put it in this agreement if we, because we're making a separate agreement. And then the last thing would be the, the chop and lop if, um, or lop and spread if, if warranted. So if you identify, if we identify those things in the agreement, I think those are the big things we discussed. Was there any other thing?
I think Melissa should be able to cover that unless uh, council has another concern. I, I mean.
Can you think of anything, Melissa?
I'm just taking notes of what you folks are saying of what I need to do. And it seems like we're hung up on a technicality here and we just need to make sure that we're keeping our place free from disease. That, so I think we just, so I, I agree with Tim that. I will be able to get this done faster than waiting another month to have this.
It's just, but now I'm thinking about problem trees that we've had over our water lines that need to get, like, you, you cut down while, like. Oh, that big root just broke our water line. We need to cut this tree down. So why is this different than that? And do we, every time the city or the, like, we knock over a tree, are we working against our ordinance? Cause I assume that it's our right of way and we could do what we want for, you know, because it's city property. It's not someone coming to the city and wanting to use city right of way. This is the city using the city right of way. And are we just beating a dead horse here? Are we like setting the precedent that we can't cut our own trees down when we have a broken water line? Or if there's something in the way, or if there's a car accident, I mean.
No, I don't think so. We're just, we're creating the, creating this moving forward. A mem, an understanding with the Department of Forestry that if they're going to need to continue, these are the things we'd like to see, because we're the property owners.
Right.
So I think that's pretty clear.
And that's typically how we deal with most landowners. I mean, we have constant communication and work with them on what we want to do. And any concerns they have.
And I think the only thing that, Tim, I would like to see, you know, I agree that it would be great to have Melissa move this forward to benefit. I think it would be useful to see their consent form and just help us, because this may be a thing moving forward, rather than just a one off deal. Um, that's the only reason why I would kind of like to see it come back. We could just have her do it this time and then, but ask her to bring.
Okay.
A memorandum back next time so that we could.
I'd go along with that, certainly. I mean, it makes sense.
Turns it into a tool for the future.
Yeah.
And then it goes back on the agenda and then, you know, it's not just a one, I don't know.
And it gives somebody a chance to.
Contribute.
Jack, if they have a problem.
Have a constructive comment.
And I, that's like, that's good practice with this type of entity to entity thing, I think, I think, but now I'm stuck on. Uh, like the memorandum of understanding should have started, that would have been the better way to go, but now like we can't, like, the city can do what they want on their right of way. We can't establish anything different. Like, it's clear that the city can cut down trees on their, its own right of way without council approval. Okay.
Right.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
Cause this falls under that same kind of thing, but we do, we should have started with the M O U. We just need to.
I think it's because it's more of an interagency agreement, really.
Really, yeah.
Two, two agencies.
Two, two agencies trying to get something done for the health of the city. And so that's another way to look at it, too.
And we're gun shy, sir. We have had a lot of, like, hours and hours of conversations over trees that are like six inches around. So it's like, we're just trying to, you know, do our due diligence. I like the memorandum of understanding. We got a motion and a second on the table, so I need you guys to retract the motion and the second, or I'll call it for the vote.
I'll retract my motion.
Who was second hand or Brett? Or was it Brett and Ann that were first? No.
I retract it and if it's me.
I, I, it's been so long.
Oceans have been retracted. We're moving forward with the M O U.
I'll make a motion that we direct staff to develop an M O U with O D F to address the need to manage sudden oak death on our city's right of ways.
Second.
What was that, Brett?
I was thinking in a, in a timely manner rather than, you know, that would be the, the goal here, it would seem that.
Oh, or the direction.
Timely, okay, great.
Or, yeah, I mean, that would, to me, I'm thinking.
Got it. Greg, you got anything?
Is there a second?
Nope, nope, this way, none of them.
I think Tim, Tim seconded it.
Okay, so we do have a second. Joseph, you're the one that needs to be clear on what happened. You good?
Counselor's motion to direct staff to build memorandum of understanding on sod of tree removal on city right of ways in a timely manner.
Who was the first and the second, though?
Andalisis was the primary motion giver and Counselor Tim Hogwitz was the secondary.
Awesome. You, you, I thought you beat him, Gary, but that, we'll go with that. No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just being this.
I'm happy with either one.
Okay. So, uh, my consensus, everybody good with that?
Yep.
Greg, Brett?
Good.
But that was great, okay. Okay, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Yes.
You should go sit next to these guys, they have so much more patience than you.
Probably Tuesday.
Okay, so citizen concerns. I've really been trying to get to these for a while. Uh, speech, please speak on agenda items only for this portion of public comment. Three minute timer. Is there anybody online?
Yes, there is. This is Jen Bailey, uh, for 18 16th Street. Um, I'm speaking about agenda item nine D, the vacation for right of ways discussion. Um, I was, I was guessing that this wasn't actually going to hit your agenda until nine 30 this evening. And now I'm thinking it'll even be later. So I just wanted to say a couple of quick things on the record about this. My, my case was brought up as an example. I'm not trying to make my case at all. I just want to point out a couple of things about this issue. Number one is that there's a process in the municipal code to request a vacation of the public right of way. I've been trying to follow that and, um, it, it, I think that you guys really need to talk to Jean Isador about his take on this. I, I understand concerns about vacating a public right of way. But I just would like the process to be followed. I've still been waiting to hear back from him about whether or not there are city utilities on Tichner Street, the particular portion where I'm talking about. And then the other thing I would like to request from you is that, um, I'm completely prepared to go through the formal process. I completely agree with you that there needs to be a fee associated with that. I just, at this point, I, at some point, I would like an indication as to whether or not the city council and the planning commission would actually support this rather than, before I spend a lot of time and money jumping through hoops. Where, if you guys are not cool with this, I would rather know sooner than later. So that was it. I will still be here at nine 30 or whenever it is that you actually get to this point. Thanks.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
Anyone else online? Okay, so we are going to move past public hearings, which that, we probably should, I should have scratched that off the agenda. I missed it. Departmental reports. Do we want to pull these out one by one? Do we have any questions? We'll start with administration. Thank you.
I gotta find my section. I guess I, it's, people were able to look at this if you have questions. I am happy to answer them.
Looks real good to me.
I think it's great. Thank you so much for the report.
Dot gov, I'm excited about emails.
So this says that one mayor position is available?
Yes, it does. Well, yeah, I mean, it's open.
Well, he has to. His term's over, so he would have to rerun if he chooses to do so.
Yeah, it's.
And is there anything further to say on that email thing? We are going to, I know at one point you were talking about going to Google perhaps rather than Microsoft 360. Is the decision we have to do.
Well, in talking with Janet from Computalk, she is much more comfortable with Microsoft and knows those products better. And that's what we currently have as far as outlook and things. And so in moving forward, it makes more sense in continuity and reeducation of people in the system to keep it where it is.
Okay.
And so, but again, I can't, until I have the, the dot gov piece set up so that we can then set up the emails so that then we can gravitate them over it, I'm going in order of what I can do. So I've, I've put it into, um, to get our domain name and dot gov and had to do all the hoop jumping. And now it's just waiting for them to approve that. So as soon as that happens, I will contact Janet and we can start that migration over.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
One of those like things lurking in the background that we've needed to do.
Ben Larkin.
Really appreciate it.
Melissa, do we?
Sir.
Do we, do we have anyone that submitted any of the stuff for council or mayor yet, you know?
Any applications? Yeah, yes, we have, um, yeah, we have three citizens who have received packets from, uh, from our office for council positions and none for mayor.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
The 27th, right, so the Tuesday?
Yep.
Correct.
Cool. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Melissa on administration?
We have lots of things going. It's just to write them all out here and to do that is, I just wanted to kind of hit some highlights from a week ago, but.
Finance.
Trust fund. Um, okay. If there's any questions, Dean, there's, there's nothing. We're, uh, again, I'm working with the department heads to make sure that we are, you know, spending in a reasonable way and yet covering the needs of the, of the city and moving things forward, so.
And then.
And this was from the end of the year.
Yes.
Right, so just so you know.
Where are we with the new finance person?
Good question. So we don't have that person yet. We are in process because the first and second avenues I had dried up. And so now I'm continuing on another avenue. And I have a prospective, um, person who we, who we really like and would like to have do it and is very knowledgeable and things. But we're hitting some roadblocks. And again, I have messages into people and waiting for their response. I think a lot of people are on vacation right now in, in summertime things. And so it's been difficult to get ahold of people and have them return things in a timely fashion, so.
Is Dave still kind of helping us?
Uh, not right now, no. We're at a point where, where he's doing that. We are, he has been helping with the 2023 audit. And so if there's questions from that, we've gotten that pretty well buttoned up and have the, you know, getting that closed up. And so Dean has been working with him.
Getting close.
It's getting close, yeah.
Finance questions? Other than that? Everything looks pretty, it's nice. Not seeing too many of 1,000 percent, I like that.
Not too many.
Okay, so moving on to public works. This will be a verbal report, I imagine?
Yeah.
John, you there?
He does not appear to be online.
Oh, no, okay.
Okay.
So we don't have a paper one from him? No, okay. I can answer some questions if you have specific questions. Can you tell me again, I know he's got like some big inspection coming up. Can you tell me the date of that? Or do you remember?
No, I cannot. I do not know the exact date of it. I believe it's in, in, within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Um, they call it a survey. And so it's with the Oregon Health Authority. They're coming down specifically Kent, Kent Downs is coming down to look through the plant and make sure things are going. Again, I know he's continued to work with the tracer study that's happened. We've, um, replaced some blowers in, on the wastewater side. So I know there's, there's things that he's been, um, working with.
It's a sanitary survey. They do it once a year and they look at everything. They look at all the tanks, they look at all the outlets, they make sure you have flapper valves. It's, it's just the.
Standard gear, yeah, great, okay. I want, I want to, I need to buttonhole him about that, um, that water intake valve grant. So I would want to.
So I'll talk to him today about it.
After he gets through the survey.
Well, I talked to him today about it and he said that he has tested it in the water plant and he's done doing that. And so he should be able to get it installed.
Right, good.
In it, here pretty soon. And so I asked that he take pictures of it and send those to you so that you have the evidence to get that reimbursement for that.
Right.
Meter.
Excellent, yeah.
Anything else on that? Oh, so, but, yeah, okay. Police, we got a report, any questions on that or anybody? Hank, you got any high points? Thank you. Planning, page five. View departmental reports. I hate that you have to look at it, even if I read it a hundred times, you still have to go to the page and look at it.
Anything to add on planning, Joseph?
It says more information may be given verbally.
Um, the things I thought I might have to report are not relevant at this time. There's going to have to be a joint work session between the city council and the planning commission. But that's probably not going to be until November or December.
Joseph had a big week because the second Tuesday of the month and the third Thursday of the month landed this week. So he had a planning commission meeting on Tuesday and now has this today. So all the packets and the things, so he's been running, so.
Oh, my goodness.
And that's the reason why I said there might be more information in case anything happened at that meeting that didn't make it into the packet.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor's report, uh, it's just been a heck of a month for me. Melissa's doing good. She seems to be gaining a little bit every day, but it's one of those jobs where you never see the gain because you got five new things every time. But we are making progress, so that's, that's the key. And thank you for getting some good publicity for us with the watershed property. And thank everybody. Yeah, we're like winding down here. We gotta, like, we gotta button some stuff up, like, we, there can be a whole new crew, so, uh, three months, Tim's not going to like the December meeting, but we got to, that, like, come next month with things that you've, like, you know that we've forgotten or the, the fruit that we need to talk about with each other before, before we separate or before we have a new group in here. Liaison report. Brett, you having from the port?
Yeah, uh, so we have our, 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 our main lead man there is in, currently in Italy, learning about our new cranes that we're, are being built. And he's, um, at the manufacturer's, uh, request there. And we're, we're just tickled with that piece of it so that he might, uh, be very well informed with our equipment when he gets here. I think that's about it. I mean, there's other stuff, uh, you know, there's, you know, I, 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 to me, that's like, hey, oh, cool, man, Hawaii. Or not Hawaii, but Italy, it's cool. I don't even know where it's, what part of Italy it's in, but I imagine it's by the sea, maybe it's in Adriatic there, maybe it's in Bari or, I don't know where, but.
It's in the middle, it's in Formajin, right in the middle of the industrial district, which isn't too far from the coast, but it isn't on, it's not as close as you would think.
Well, they ship that by ship.
Darren was happy camper. I haven't talked to him yet, but everything's so far.
Yeah. That's cool. That's really cool. So, yep, I think that's just exciting, fun news for, for everybody, okay?
Sparrow staircase is going to be nice on the inside.
Yeah, for sure. That's awesome.
What's going on at the school for summer, Perry?
Uh, nothing.
That's, that's, hey. So moving on to the fire district, we do have some stuff to talk about with them.
Yeah, there's a fire contract, that's it.
I just, we do want to really take the moment to, uh, appreciate the fire fighters for those two fires. I mean.
Thank you, Ann.
You know, just having, being out there and watching one of them, it's just, really appreciate.
Twenty nine calls last month.
Yeah, that was, yeah, in this little list they gave is kind of amazing.
Yeah, absolutely. Ann?
Well, I put everything into the writing and, uh, I think if anybody has any questions, you're welcome to ask me. And, uh, things are clicking along on a number of things, just there's lots of details that, you know, I'm working on. Um, and the big news is that Linda Tar is going to be stepping down as the watershed chair, which, um, she's been a great contributor to our community in this role. And, uh, so I will miss her and we'll pick up the ball with the new folks. And we still have some people who have been on for like decades, like Phyllis Johns and John Luthy, who are sticking with it. So that's great, anyway. I guess the big thing just to mention is we are, Melissa and I have been working on trying to track down funding for the dredging. And that is an ongoing thing that we recognize is a very urgent matter and, um, things take time, but we're work, that's like kind of top of mind, so.
And is, we're getting real close on the D E Q permit?
Well, we have the, oh, for the, we have the permit.
For the dredging?
For the dredge.
We're all good to go?
Yes, we just don't have the money to do it now.
Gotcha, oh, perfect.
Even though we did try, I tried at the beginning of the year to try to do those in tandem to get the money so that when we got the permit, we could do it. It's, um, it's hard to do that, but we're getting there, maybe.
Is there a timeframe on the D E Q permit?
Yes, because we have to do it within in-stream work season, which ends at the end of September. Possibly could be extended a little bit into October, depending on when the rains come.
Could it go into next year, the same permit, or does it have to?
Oh, no, the permit can go to next year, but we have to do the work within the in-stream work season. So that's what we're up against.
It's got to be done in the fall.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can take like. In the first half of the year.
Is that permit?
Over twenty years or something.
Yeah, what, Brett?
Um, is that permit for, um, the new, now larger amount that we needed? Or was it the original or the last mistake number that we had?
No, it's, it's for the larger amount and the, the plan that we're trying to pursue at the moment is what I think of as the big scoop, then maintenance thereafter. Um, and so that's, you know, because, so anyway, that's kind of what in the short of it. But if you want to ask any other for, you know, we can talk more about it if people want to know more, but we're still trying to line up funding. I think once we get funding, we will, we're talking with Civil West, there'll be a plan to, and we'll bring more specific details.
It would sure be great if the, if, if, you know, the port owns a very valuable dredge and is mobile. And it, it would be, sure would be neat to try to work some, have an M O U there or, you know, or even just contract. We talked about it in the beginning of when the port was getting that equipment that we could contract.
Okay, that's good to know. Is that size of that dredge, the port's dredge, possible to use in the city reservoir?
I think it would be. I, I mean, I haven't, I, I'm not very intimate with the, um, reservoir, but I am familiar with what's done at the port. And it's, you know, much more, might have to have a different cutter head for each project, but, um, uh, The whole, the whole idea was going, was that the port would, would, would contract to like the feds because they weren't doing their channel at the time. And we'd say, well, shoot, we, you know, give us a hundred thousand and we'll do what we can. But then the, the FASIA came through, it's a, a bill that really changed, changed the game. And, and it required the, required the harbor maintenance trust fund to be spent on harbor maintenance and that small ports were included. And since that day, it's been just a whole different ball back. So I think that there's potential and maybe we should consider that.
Okay, thanks for that information. I might follow up with you or Pat on that, thank you.
Very good.
Ann, I had a question on, why won't DEQ allow us to pump into our own holding areas anymore?
Well, I think that they will for maintenance, but I think for the amount of it, of the spoils to, for the big scoop is going to be so large. And so we, as a preliminary site identified possibly using the, the.
City yards.
City yards as a place to put it, and it's also going to be very liquidy. So that's kind of part of the whole planning process to figure out how we're going to actually pull it off.
Could run over the ponds.
Okay, that's what I could never figure out, but why can't we dig twenty thousand yards or whatever the yardage is out of our ponds while it's dry and movable? And then pump the wet stuff into the, you don't have to.
Well, that's, I think that's the idea of how it's supposed to operate all the time, but since we've allowed ourselves, this is my understanding, since we've allowed ourselves to get into this situation, yeah, but.
But I just mean, it's just dirt when it's in the pond, so we move dirt, people would probably want it. And then all the wet sloppy stuff goes into those reservoirs and, and we're done.
Right, well.
I never, but, but Marlin has told us many times that we can't do that.
Well.
I just don't remember the.
I think the ponds are goofed up by some work that had been previously done on the fish ladder.
No, it would not surprise me.
I, I don't remember, but why don't we bring it back?
Nineteen ninety-eight, yeah.
Did you see that memo? There's, we're having a meeting on three o'clock on the twenty-second with, with them to discuss that, so let's bring it back up again.
Okay.
Because that could be a game changer for us.
Right, and that's the reason I'm asking is my son is doing this same kind of a job in another state and DEQ is allowing them to put the soil in the ponds. And, you know, I'm just wondering why we can't, so.
Well, I thought that there was some part of it to begin with, Pat, and I don't, you know, this is like, there's so many details floating around. I feel like the last time we talked about this realm of things was three months ago, so I don't exactly remember. But I thought there was some part of that, that we were supposed to be weed whacking and clearing all those out. And I was up there the other day, they're totally overgrown and, you know, so I don't know. Let's, let's follow up on that and get clear on it, Pat.
I think it's a good follow-up because, you know.
That would make sense.
I, I just, that's, that's a question my son asked me the other day, why are they making you haul it out? He's, I'm on a job right now doing what you need to be doing.
I think it's, I think they're anticipating the amount is going to be great, but a lot of that amount I've also heard is wood and dunk that's going to be very liquidy, you know?
Well, and that's where it just seems like the process, if we planned it and like, we're not dredging if we get sticks out of the pond before we start dredging. Like get, get the right piece of, and it's not easy. I mean, you'd have to get like a, a log yarder or something that you could just put, put down there and, and bail it out. And if we have those ponds, we could dredge. But that's the thing is when we asked about the ponds, we're asking our engineer, we're not asking DEQ if it's possible, which hopefully he knows that, you know what I mean? But I have not heard from DEQ that, no, you can't move that yardage out and then pump back.
Well, if we get very specific, we can call them and ask them. I mean, I don't, I think that's a fine thing to do.
Well, it would save us a lot of money, I, I think it's a huge amount of money.
Well, and it's actually a good question too, because it could be part of the funding that we're asking for, yeah, like.
They do save me at the port with the, the sand on the beach. I mean, we could, we could pack that sand off the beach for pennies on the dollar, but we wait for it to get drawn down into the channel and, and spend half a million instead of thirty thousand. It's, it's amazing. But that's what the people have decided, the people with this expertise have decided that that was best. So who am I arguing with them and so I won't, but it's, it's odd.
I think there's some concern about like running the liquid off and then it would run off into the stream. But I think that's vaguely what I remember, but, so, let's.
Okay.
Because of the way.
Worth asking about though.
It's perched, there's also some, there may be even some property question if all those ponds are on our land, so.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, you're actually, it is, yeah, nevermind, that's ancient, ancient history. Okay, so thank you, Ann. Let me know, you said the twenty-second at three for that meeting?
Next Thursday at three.
Okay, Parks, Greg, Tidy?
September fourteenth, it looks like the Friends of the Community Center are having a community day above in the park. So the eleven to two o'clock, they're gonna have the entire thing, they're gonna have tons of stuff going on that day, so look forward to community being there.
Nice.
Hey, since Melissa's not here, I wanted to mention Greg that we did have Lehi from CCD here earlier this week. And so I was taking him to show him the site of the raw water pond and took him to show him the site of the playground. Because Melissa able to follow up and, you know, talk to him about that as we discussed at the last meeting. So I just took advantage of that opportunity and he was super psyched. Said we need to, you know, just keep an eye on when that grant proposal's coming up again, so.
Last Monday, I had Public Works have to pull out some of the playground due to being rusted off and being exposed. So we lost about a quarter of our playground last week, so it, you know, this is like, this is, for Parks, it's probably our number one priority. They thank Public Works for getting on it so quickly and Melissa, it was within like thirty minutes and he's calling and it was, they had it all, we were pulling it out of the ground, so thank you again.
It looked really cleaned up and it looked good. I was relieved that it actually looked safe, what, what's there, it looks good, so anyway.
And now we're gonna be able to get with this bigger thing.
I think we're, yeah, I heard that rumor.
Cool, thank you very much, guys.
No.
Thanks Greg.
TLT, TLT, nothing to report at this time. Main Street.
Everything's in there.
Thank you for that. Any questions for Gary on Main Street?
On Main Street, I would just like to bring up that Susan Russell has been responsible for some of the improvements at that facility. I think at her own cost, if I'm not mistaken. So I would like to thank her for that and that is up and above, obviously.
Oh, yeah, oh my gosh, thank you, it's really looking good down there, I went down.
That's really a cool space, yeah.
Yeah, it's great.
And Kim Foster really needs a, a thank you for all the work she's done on the Port, Discover Port Oxford website. And she's continuing to work on some, doing some really good work on that, promoting the town.
She's great. And emergency prep?
I think it's got everything in there.
This doesn't really touch on, this is for the end of the meeting, not for, yeah. Any questions for, on emergency prep for Gary?
No, I'm really psyched to see you guys are doing this outreach work, that's gonna be great. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, so we got through the hard part of the meeting. Eight, old business, irrigation meter policy.
I would make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero-two, the garden meter policy.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
See, definitely seems like a worthwhile program.
Well, it's something that has been going on for a long time and people are interested in, in more of them. And I, so I think just having it clarified is going to be really important for our town. This is, these are little things that seem like, of course, they have an ordinance or of course they have something behind them and we don't. And so we just need to get something so we know what to do. And I think, again, there'll be people interested in doing this. The only question that came up was should we order more so that we have them available here for people who want them, even though we're in curtailment? And so that was the only question that we had, although when I looked at the curtailment verbiage, it had different levels and we haven't been to the highest level, which would say that you, you know, in the levels that we're in, you can hand water your fruit-bearing trees and herbs and vegetables and things. So that, that doesn't fly in the face of our curtailment verbiage that I could see. But that's just something to be aware of, is that, again, it focuses on refunding or crediting money to the sewer that's not being used with it. But that's the, where the money would be credited back to, but there was a question about that. So I, I want to make sure that we're okay to order more meters so that people can buy them from us so that we can.
Yeah, it does, does it say anywhere in here that the resident needs to buy, is the purchaser, or not just given out?
Correct, that the, the city will, will procure them and it's not in here, but that's just, that's more of kind of just our internal process. But that we would have them available and we would charge basically so that we, so that the city would at minimum break even. So it would be the cost of the meter and then any shipping and handling and probably, you know, a, a piece for the staff time and efforts and monitoring and checking and all that stuff that would go on it. So we'll keep it obviously reasonable and fair, but we're gonna.
Do we think that that should be in this or is that just assumed?
Again, I think that's more of an operation side.
Okay.
Situation, I don't know that we need to necessarily manage that on this, that's my personal opinion. It says city provided, so I think that's clear. I mean, we could say instead of may use, I mean, has, I, I think that's clearer, I think with the way it is, it's pretty good, okay.
Okay, I had somebody approach me just last week and I told him we were gonna be doing this and that there would probably be meters available very soon, so.
I just want to make, clarify that, that that's the, that's the plan, so. I think this covers the basic problems that have come up and questions that have come up. Melissa, could you see, foresee any other things that have like happened in the office that there's anything else that you would like to see in here from a?
No, I think having anything is better than what we have, which is nothing. And it also lets people know they need to turn them in their, their meter reads from those in a timely fashion and that they will be available for inspection. I mean, those are some of the things that have been questions or hiccups before and I think we've clarified that and.
And it's, that it's a credit for the sewer, so.
It's a credit for the sewer, correct, yeah. So, and they'll be processed all in one batch and so that credit will be on the next bill. It's not an immediate credit to the person, it goes to their sewer bill.
Excellent, thanks for doing.
The only people that'll have heartache are the people that, or like, are the people that grandfathered in with whatever meter they have.
Oh, of course, yeah, they don't, yeah, everyone doesn't have to go buy a new meter, no.
That's, that's kind of like, was my next question there was, we know that meters lose count as they go. And are we, I mean, they're gonna be the ones losing, losing credit. And I wonder if that's gonna be something that we should try to address or if not, you know, then, I don't know, Pat knows a lot more about a water meter or any type, you know, a meter for, for that matter than I do, but they do read less as they go, right? So.
Just from.
No, they read slower as they go.
They read slower as they go.
They go, so it would, they would be the ones taking.
No, they wouldn't.
And it's not the volume of their main water.
They would, it would show less, it would show less water than you use in the garden, which would be to their detriment.
But that, you're forgetting the first meter, our meter that is the full gallonage, which would set the base. And then if their meter was reading under, they're still paying that base rate, so we wouldn't be losing. Because the meters read less than they're putting out. Like, you know, after the time, you're getting ninety-nine percent of the read. So, so in this particular instance, we would be okay because we have our first initial reading. I'm not saying that that first initial reading isn't losing some percentage, but for this equation, we're covered as far as losing those pennies.
Well, we are, I mean, but I, I guess, my point is that, that that is, we, we talked about how they become less accurate and, and more generous as, as time goes. And in this case, it would create a, a situation where the property owner would be not being credited the full amount that was going into his or her garden. And maybe that's just a detail that need not even be mentioned, but we've talked about it before, so I just remind everybody, yep.
I think, I don't think we can accom, I think this is like a real accommodation, I don't know how many cities do this as an accommodation. And, I mean, those meters are really expensive and the person buying them has to pay for it. So, I mean, I think if somebody felt like their meter was too slow and they wanted to get a new one, they could do it. But I don't feel like we could take on that detail.
Right, right, no, no, I get it, that's what I'm saying though, I mean.
The, the meter can.
It depends on if you're buying or selling, right, buying or selling.
I think we should say it, just the meter that reads to the gallon and that the inspection is the key. If somebody says, oh, I used eight thousand gallons of water, then you're gonna expect to be like, oh, you're using this, this meter that you got out of a toy box, you need to upgrade it, you know? Would, would that streamline things if we did? But it, either way, if it's city provided, we know that it's.
We've done the best we can do, I think.
That's the thing is, 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 we have spent a lot, I'm happy that this is probably how it's gonna land. Because this, if we're gonna charge people for water curtailment and people are interested in conserving water and tracking it, then that's a good.
And I think if we, if, you know, our public work staff picks the meter, then it's just, it removes all that thing of like, somebody bought one from China that's plastic, somebody brought a brass one, somebody. It just makes it fair, there's no question, then they don't have to go out and inspect them unless there's really, you know.
Right.
Yeah, so good, excellent.
Okay, any more discussion, we got a motion a second on the table. I'll go ahead and call for the vote, Council Tidy?
Yes.
Council Burns?
Yes.
Council Rask?
Yes.
Council Webb?
Uh, Webb, no.
Council Bogwitz?
Tim, yes.
And Councilor Vlasis?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, oh, give me this for that very reason. Moving on to new business, item A, ERPD items for discussion, we have the findings. So we'll, we'll just hit that one first, the findings are still in the lurch, right?
Right, so we've contacted our lawyer, Lori Cooper, and she has, is going to write those up and those will be ready for the September meeting. So because you asked for them to, to, to not do specific to what Bill Cluse Esquire did, our person is now looking at them and so she'll bring that forward in September.
Awesome.
Okay. All right, and then the second item, which is like the dang mayor has to bring up all these silly details, but the cost of the city. Because we have the question right now with that legislative appropriation on the, the board, like the, before that is in action, we're accruing these costs for our attorney and, and it's just, it's a rub, it's gonna rub some of the community the wrong way if we don't play it right. So I just wanted us to talk about how we're gonna move forward with that. Are we, like, because we, I mean, we are in a negotiation with people, we wanna like, like move forward, we don't want to slow things down. But that's the first, you know, piece of the puzzle is, are we gonna fit the bill for this in hopes of a good thing in the future? I mean, we know that our coffers are pretty light and it, we, we can't afford extra costs, so.
Pretty.
That's the.
Does the appropriation allow for, for repayment of administrative fees? Does the appropriation allow for administrative?
Say that again.
Does the appropriation allow for administrative costs to be paid?
It does, but we have to fill out the, we have to fill out the application showing what the project entails before we can access that money.
Copy.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, so, yeah, exactly, so that's, that's gonna be the next item on the agenda. But I had, was having a, a different conversation earlier with Joseph about fees and planning that have to do with something else. And it turns out that what we, apparently what we do in planning now is there's the application fee, but then there's also something that says, and if we, you know, get other costs that are like legal fees or whatever, that the person agrees to pay them. So, I mean, I. So, I mean, I think we could work out an agreement where we ask for that, especially until we could figure out this other thing.
But is it already signed off on since we've been doing the conditional use permits and stuff?
No, cause it, oh, I don't think that was the case, right? That's relative. I think, you know, how we asked the departments to come up with making sure they're, they're paying their costs. But I think that maybe Crystal added that more recently, just because, you know, our application cost is really cheap. And then there's all these costs of our staff. And so she, I think, has been rightly telling people upfront like, well, yeah, the application fees this, but it may cost more and we need you to be willing to pay that for. So anyway, that would be a way, I mean, I'm just saying we have precedence to do that. That's what we're doing now. We didn't apparently have that in position when we started this project, but that would make sense to me.
Right, and my rub still is what is our staff not gonna be able to do because of time restraints? Because they're doing this, even though they're getting, we're getting paid. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Well, we could.
Staff can, so much, yeah, they have to do their work. They're, they're overloaded now. So anything that they have to do for this project is gonna be taken away from something that they would be doing for the city. Whether they're, we're getting paid for it or not.
Wait, I have to, I mean, I, I guess we have to remember that, that, that this is being done for the city as well and that it has been deemed of something that the council wants to move forward with. And if it comes to that, if, if staff hours really are problematic, I think what, in the past couple of years, we've seen very inefficient work. And I'm confident with what we have now. Many of these projects will be much quicker and, and, and just. I'm, I'm easier to convince when certain people tell me things and less likely to object to things. You know, I, I, I just, I, I think we've got a better capacity than we've had in, in, like, I get, Gary, your term has been just riddled with anomalies and, and oddities and things that are, are just not common. And I think that maybe in the future, it won't be so bad. I just, I can't, I can't help but think that, to have faith in our, in our, um, our staff that we have now is professional. And I just can't help but think that it's gonna be better and, uh, that's all. But, but if it isn't, then you hire. You, you take that money that's, that's being, you know, that, that if we need another staff person, then we get a, you know, then we use that money to hire more staff or something. We've had more staff in the past. I'm not saying that we can afford it, but with that money we can, um, maybe, you know, I don't know.
If we start the, at least be open to that idea that if we need another assistant for you to be dealing with the golf course stuff or another public works employee to help with that, or I don't know, I just want to bring that up.
Another thought, I mean, I don't, I can't imagine it would be that much stuff. But I think, I mean, we've had conversations with Melissa about that council needs to prioritize. And because we have, there are times when we have big things going on in our city that have to do with staffing or infrastructure failure or whatever. And when those things are happening, staff has to prioritize that. And that's just the way, that's why sometimes things take longer than we would like. But that's something, you know, that our administrator works on and she needs our guidance for. And that's, I mean, that's part of the pressure valve is that things take longer. Unfortunately, you know, for better or worse, because we are such a little staff, but I totally hear you, Gary.
I appreciate that. I, I think the hard, I think the hard part though is that it seems like a lot of money and it is if we were talking about that allocation, but when you add staff or you have that, then that is a, I mean, I appreciate that, but it's hard because if you hire someone, then that is a compounding.
Another person you got.
Another person. I mean, that's, that's a compacting, compounding debit that we're taking out all the time for the long term. It, that's, that's hard.
It doesn't have to be for that, it could be for that project.
I mean, it could be a temporary situation. It could be something like that. I think, I think that that would be, I think that would be valid.
But the only thing required to do anything on this is council direction. Like that's what dictates what you do and that, and the, the goals change. Everything could change in three or four months. Like that's the nature of this beast, so.
So Melissa could come to us asking for some help and we could address it at that time, but I just wanna.
Right, yeah, no, for sure. It is one of the big concerns.
Our most, this, this project is not, we're not mandated to do this necessarily. To me, the whole thing would be different if this was a secondary out, outfall and that that is forever.
Right, well, now we're still discussing that. Like that is one of the facets of the discussion is just these two, like, we came up with that one shot, that we need to figure out how we're gonna fit the bill for this until we, that money becomes actionable, which we would need to figure out exactly what that is for, to fill out that form, to make it actionable first, which is the ways out. And then also that original agreement has changed because we're gonna be spending city dollars right now. And that original agreement said at no cost to the city. So those are the kind of things that we're talking about tonight to try to get this baseline set. Um, and I thought cost was pretty high up on the list of how we're gonna do that. And then also what we're gonna do with this memorandum of understanding in the agreement. Like it, it's that 750,000 put us back to the, the starting point in a lot of ways.
So like.
And now we're being told that we need to perform well and we wanna perform well and we wanna get this off our plate as fast as possible because we do have short staff.
I, I think like some of these costs, I mean, we can think about it in tiers. The, the first line of costs is paying Lori to even look at this stuff. And so, you know, it may not be, it may be 20 hours, it may be 50 hours over the night. I, I don't know, but I, it's not like a full-time staff person. It's like a concrete thing. Or it may be having an engineer, you know, look at this, write up a proposal or those sorts of things that are pretty discreet until we can act, make that other money actionable.
But like, right now, right now, um, uh, Melissa and Joseph should be marking down 20 minutes of time spent on the project. It's, it's how you do it. And if, if this isn't staff time being used on the project, I don't know what is. It's, there's, it's very broad in, in what can be expected to cost. I mean, they know, those, the bureau of ads in Salem know exactly what their time's worth and they assume our time's worth the same, I imagine.
I think your point is good. Yeah, good point, Brett.
So we got off the cost. How, like, what, what are we gonna do? We need to have our attorney draft up an agreement for the cost sharing or how, how that's gonna be?
Is that the, probably the next step? That, that makes sense.
Yeah, if you guys think so. I mean, and I would say, you know, it, it should be short and simple, you know, and like, that, like this, the pretense was no cost to the city and we're, that's what we need to keep it at, as we're talking about.
Well, I, I think we can go, if, if you do it, you know, bit by bit, like in this instance, we don't want cost sharing at all. We want it to be funded through the ground money or the, the allocation or whatever we wanna call that. So, you know, um, because cost sharing.
The allocation until we get all this paperwork lined up, make it happen.
Understood. And then moving forward, we would ask that our partner in Salem would be specific in language that addresses that upfront need to, to. And, and have we, have we communicated with them thoroughly our financial situation? Because I have seen things change where a, a granting body might say, you know what, we're gonna, we're gonna go back in and talk to the board and then we come out. And then now you can use that money for upfront, um, planning or whatever, you know what I mean? So have we thoroughly exhausted that approach?
Uh, no.
I don't ask that. I don't understand.
He's asking if we can talk to the legislators about some of the upfront costs before we get the, that paper to them.
I, I, what I've, when the conversation that I was in with Tony about this is, get us your proposal. We can't spend any money until you get us this proposal. So that's the net, one of the next items on the agenda. And some of those costs will be included in that, but we can't get to there until we get our proposal.
So the proposal itself, the proposal itself can, can have language that clearly lays out our need for money immediately, right? And, and on regular, regular term, you know, every 30 days or something like that.
I, I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing what you're saying, Brett.
Oh, I was just saying that the agreement or the proposal that, that they want to see gives us our opportunity to say that right then we want, you know, a hundred thousand. We don't have to, it doesn't have to be piecemeal all the way through, say, and they can just go into a, a, um, a, a bucket of money, a standalone bucket there, set aside for.
Yeah, and that is gonna come up, so let's, maybe we can discuss that when that, that comes up, the proposal.
Oh, yes, I.
Okay, so, uh, by consensus, is everybody okay to have Lori start drafting up a letter to, I mean, but it's, it's pretty open-ended right now.
The third one, is that the third bullet? That's the MOU? No, it's number two.
We're talking about the cost of the city, about establishing a document that says the city's not on the hook for these attorney costs and.
Okay.
You know, but like just those costs, like I think that we are, we're, we're working with ERPD to try to come to the best resolution and it's kind of, we're kind of sounding right now like we're, we're, like we're, we're, we're exploring things right now, you know what I mean? And so we wanna work with them. We, we, it's for the option of a secondary outfall. There's a lot of questions too there, but the whole precedent has been for a benefit to the city. So we have to remember that that is, was the main goal the whole time. It's just there's new stuff now that involves money.
And it's just that we are like at zero dollars at the moment.
But even if we weren't, it's like, even if we were flush, that doesn't mean we would pay money for an entity outside of the city other than there's a benefit for the city involved in this conversation.
Yeah. The applicant has expressed in the past, if I'm not mistaken, that they want, want to cover our attorney fees. So I, I don't think there's a problem here. If we get to this next proposal for water recycling funds, this is gonna start the ball rolling so we can start, you know, getting ready to get to the T, basically. So I, I think we perhaps are overthinking it. I do agree with you wholeheartedly though. We have to, you know, these expenses, it was, it was never supposed to cost us any money.
Well, and that's, that is such a good answer, Tim, of, it's like, that is one of the big questions is that the language says for water recycling. And that's the document we need to come up with is what this money is for. And that's really one of these top questions that didn't shake out clearly is that also needs to be answered.
But I think the cost to the city thing, I mean, I think we're clear that we, all along, it's been that there's not gonna be a cost to the city.
Correct.
We have a time period, like maybe a bridge of time right now where there are going to be expenses that we would like ERPD to pay for, to help us to explore and continue down this path. Those are things like lawyer fees and possibly engineering fees, possibly staff fees. So I think that's, that's number two, is we just ask Lori to.
Correct.
Come up with an agreement and share it with Mr. Cluse. Does that make sense?
Do we need a lot of sense?
Make a motion or do we?
Type thing?
Uh, we'll just do a vote if it's.
Let's make it clean, yeah.
Yeah, cause then we should clean it up too and make a motion, clean it up with a motion and then I will call for the vote.
Okay, I make a motion to direct staff to, direct our attorney to develop a agreement with ERPD to cover costs to the city to work on
the water.
elements of, uh, the proposal for water recycling.
I'm sick of that.
Sorry to not get it.
That was good, up right off the bat.
Yeah.
Just rolled that out of the hat.
I needed your help. Thanks, Tim.
You were doing great.
It's like she's a writer or something.
Give me a second. You're on my deaf side. Uh, any more discussion on that? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Counselor Webb? Counselor Tidy?
Yeah.
Counselor Rask?
Yes.
Counselor Velises?
Yes.
Counselor Pogwitz?
Yeah, Webb, yeah.
Webb, yes. Oh, no worries.
And Burns, yes.
Okay.
My thumb failed me.
Okay, and now the MOU discussion, there is so many facets of it. Oh, but hey, before we continue, I will need a motion to extend the meeting.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Enjoy your evening.
That was close.
That was a great meeting.
Also great to get out.
I was ready to jump before that thing went.
What's up, Joseph?
Uh, can we please amend that to be extend the meeting after a brief recess?
Sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
Did we get a second on that or?
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I, I just heard everything that went on in your head, Brett. I didn't even need to see your face.
Well, we need to, um, agree on this proposal for water recycling funds, so I'll second it.
Yeah, I'll second, I'll, I'll second the, the motion to extend the meeting.
Okay, call for the vote. Counselor Rask?
Yes.
Tidy?
No.
Velises?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Pogwitz?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Okay, meeting continues. Go ahead. Everybody take a five.
Actually, we had fire department contract too.
Yep.
ADA.
That was all good.
We were having an ADA discussion?
Just very, very briefly. Right now, stop it.
The hell's wrong with everybody?
I was happier who I am, just gonna tell you.
Putting all this stuff on there, dude. If you had a talk bill in your hand.
No, I did not.
Oh, don't play that game.
I did not.
I brand meetings from across the country and I guarantee I had to.
I would never, Tim. I would never.
Okay. I believe you. We had some really weird stuff during COVID, didn't we?
See, you're not a mortal person, but you're not a natural.
You get negotiations at that time?
Yeah, like all 16 of them, whoever it was.
Here.
This is so open-ended.
We could talk about this memorandum of understanding for three days.
Can we talk about that? Put in our two bits.
Seems hurting it that we haven't even put our bits in yet. And that's the kind of stuff that I have to be careful of because, well, I mean.
We're, we're just looking for a fairly generic. We're not, how the watch works is gonna be looked at once engineering goes on. We're looking for the time right now.
I can't really be listening. I, I.
I'm gonna walk away just cause.
Yeah, we can't.
Just cause we have a quorum in here right now.
We gotta be so careful with.
Yeah, there's witnesses, sorry.
Obviously, I have sworn in here.
That's an open-ended conversation.
I have like this funny thing where um I wake up every morning if it was like a natural time, I wake up.
How's it?
Good. Everything's good. We're good to go.
Oh, awesome. That's great.
Not on what I mean unless we get hit by a bus.
I had to be at school at like seven fifty or we had this woman who was just, you know, you were just in deep doo doo if you weren't there. So um, anyway, I think that's the that's the issue.
When I was in high school, my dad used to. Used to have such a hard time getting me out of bed. And one time he went into the freezer and it's right on the ice, you know? He came in and pulled his back and threw it on me.
Gosh, that sounds traumatic.
It was, but I was really mad. He says, you've got to get up. I know. Oh, that's fun.
I was sort of traumatized. That was sort of like the end of like, okay.
Yeah.
How are you tuning, Gary? If you needed to like come over and like check in with you and see how you're doing.
Long.
Lots of stuff. I'm so glad that you were able to have that chat to the first spot. I kind of saw it coming and I thought, no, he needs to like, we need to pull him in. And I was. You had asked me the day before of like, how do we have this? It's like we have to like. So I'm so glad you did.
He agreed um to have a officer at a um watch meeting. So that way we. It'll just really depend on if there's a group of citizens that want to take part. And it's not all about trolling. There's a lot of different aspects that can a group can do to help.
Gary, what is the? So Jeff Hughes is the what?
The um county emergency coordinator. He took over actually themes.
So what what is that position? What do they do?
Responsible for the whole county's emergency plan.
Oh, wow.
So like the last person who was really good.
Oh, Monica.
Right.
Which is actually, he actually. But it's really more like a plan of this on all these things.
And that was lost in the ransomware attack.
Pardon?
Her whole plan was.
Lost? Oh, no.
I think I had a copy of it. I saw on my computer rattling.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they had like that share file one uh forms or I don't know.
I remember we were referring to it all the time.
Right, and it had like this this program that you could go in. I wonder if that program got compromised and we're just looking at an empty file. Like I haven't I didn't click on it.
I have. I'm sure I have a PDF version of it.
Yeah, I don't know exactly.
Oh, if you have a P, yeah.
Sure, I have a.
I think that was part of the reason why she was terminated.
Really?
Well, not not the plan, but because I think ransomware thing.
Sit by you. That's my question.
It's your job.
Tell you to quit pretending.
Nobody can handle this, Mayor. Uh, okay, so I don't need. I'll do one of those just because we're back.
Thank you.
Uh, and we were past the cost of the city and talking about this memorandum of understanding.
Now, do do we think that Lori has enough information to do a beginning?
It seemed like she did. We just.
Are we talking about the MOU for the cost to the city or the MOU of the sort of just general agreement that we're talking about?
Well, because of what we found with the agreement and all the facets of what we were talking about and Lori saying this seems like a member of understanding, memorandum of understanding type thing, we had to wait until this meeting to take action items. So this could be as easy as directing staff to have Lori start working on a basic memorandum of understanding that we can add.
We can tweak once.
Once we get the basic bare bones of this covers the city for liability.
For number two.
Can we do that by consensus now?
That's what I'm confused. That's what I'm.
Oh, no, the number two is going to be a contract or just that's going to be a contract or an agreement between us and the RPD for the costs until money becomes.
And so that's one.
Until possible funds become available.
Right, so that's the one. And then now we're talking about this one.
Standing. Yeah, it's a big one.
I just wanted to know which MOU we were discussing and.
Well, there's only one MOU. The first one's an agreement or a contract.
Do you um?
The cost, the item B, cost of the city is going to be an agreement or a contract, not a memory.
Although it says an MOU in the notes. That's why I keep saying that is it does say that right there. So that's why I'm getting confused.
Do you want a motion for the MOU?
Well, and she because she like Lori very well may say, we'll just wrap that into the MOU. That, you know, the the cost part of it.
It all becomes one.
There's two different things. Well, she may, but I think there is two different things because the first one is just like. Getting us to make sure that when she starts working on the other thing, that the cost is paid for. So she may say rope them together, but I think it's two different.
We need.
Yeah, because really you need that signed before you start working on the.
Yes.
The other.
And that ends up being kind of a format of how the expenses would be kept track of and turned in and to who and is that kind of basically what that?
I think it's just an agreement. I think it's just an agreement. And then again, that's an operational thing that I think behind of how we go about doing that will be separate. But the first thing is to have an agreement that says, yes, they're willing to cover. Costs for that. That's the agreement. And then the details of that would be how we go about it. Then that would be.
Yeah.
An operation.
To you is just we want to make sure that the costs are covered. Please work that out.
Yes.
And if that happens, can that just be signed by them before the next meeting and and we can direct Lori to start working on the other facet if that if that's decided?
Them being ERPD them? Oh, yeah.
Without having to come back for review, but it's also, you know what I mean? It's a simple agreement, but we usually look at that stuff, but we know the intention of it. We know that it's.
It'll be looked at by Lori.
Right.
And I can run it by you too.
Yeah, I think.
So I but we just, you know, when we if we when we make a motion for this MOU, we should say contingent on the agreement being signed, the cost, the cost.
Yeah, yeah. Good idea.
So waiting for a motion on that.
I make a.
We could literally talk for a week on this.
I would make a motion on the MOU with ERPD regarding the water recycling proposal. Contingent on the agreement. To start covering. Cost to the city. Seconded.
Any more discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Counselor Webb.
Yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counselor Rask.
Yes.
Counselor Tidy.
Yes.
Counselor Pogwitz.
Tim, yes.
Counselor Velises.
Yes.
Okay.
Sweet.
And we are moving on to A four. And that is the proposal of water for water recycling.
I want to. Can I clarify something? I'm sorry. So the MO, this this third MOU that we're talking about is that should come up to write up. So rather than the. Master water use agreement that you looked at, you're asking for just an MOU that we're going to continue with the relationship. Moving forward, so not making a decision, but that's so that's this MOU to which you're referring.
No, if at the meeting, in the workshop meeting, we had some discussion and we, I mean, I I asked for it specifically. One of the questions we asked EPRD was to. Outline what are all the agreements, not just the first agreement. What are going to be all the things that are going to have to happen in the future? And Lori said, oh, what you need to do is get an MOU that like.
Right.
Explains everything.
And she was in the conversation.
Yeah, and that is what we need to start with. And then we can see that, oh, this agreement is going to be agreement number one. And then there's like ten more agreements and this is the process and we.
Okay.
We know what we're getting into as opposed to we're just like doing one thing at a time.
Correct.
And that's okay. I that's why I needed to be clear about of what specifically I was triggering with her.
Do you remember that? Yeah, that was that part of that discussion is what we're following up on.
There were lots of discussions and lots of words. And so I just need to be clear on which words we were talking.
We did? Like one minute after or something?
Yeah.
Good job. Because you couldn't vote to extend the meeting. Only reason.
That's right.
So Ann has worked really hard on this ERPD.
She sure has.
Recycling proposal, and I would like to make a motion to approve this proposal as written.
And I would just say too that I did start working this on this to get us to be able to like. Get off the dime and move it in a a way that I think is positive. And I got input uh at the last meeting, we described how. Tim and Pat and I met together with Melissa kind of as a little bit of a. You know, ahead of this meeting to say, what do we need to get onto the agenda, whatever? And. And so I got some input from those guys too. And on language and and content.
I'll second the motion.
So now. Is engineering going to be like the first step as far as the plant?
Want me to go over this?
Yeah, so page fifteen.
Page fifteen. We had a discussion at the recent work session that um Mr. Speakman, we were talking about how does this money get spent? And there's this dilemma that it has to get spent. Kind of like if the city does something, the city is going to own it. And and one of the ways that it seemed like useful to move forward. Some of many of the things that were said in that meeting, like Tim mentioned, let's focus on water recycling and. What? How do we make sure that we can use the money to the benefit of our community and and keep working towards this, but not get out over our skis? So um I also had had a conversation with our engineer at one point. Um, anyway, so the first step of this proposal is a feasibility and a cost study. For potential uses of recycled water, including. Return to plant capacity, the secondary outfall and recycled water supply uh for other things like backup safety, boat washing, other things. So we have a. We're we're driving the boat of what is, what are the water recycling possibilities? What's feasible? How much would it cost? These things like return to plant capability. Um, this comes from right when we got this. I asked Crystal, who was our wastewater treatment plant, what are the upgrades that we need that count could count as water recycling or that? And that's how I came to learn that our wastewater treatment plant has huge numbers of problems. And, you know, I got a tour there last summer with John Huddle and we were both like, oh, my gosh. Um, so return to plant capability means that we use recycled water back in our wastewater treatment plant. And last year or two years ago, there was a issue where we use, we had to end up using treated water, so it costs more. So getting that. Fixed and working really well is a good thing.
Yes, also, I found out on this same thing that a return to plant. In another idea of return to plant in this is actually if something were to happen in our wastewater treatment plant where the. Coliforms were too high or something, you know, failed within the system, then there's actually a return to plant that the.
Oh, to reprocess.
To reprocess the.
It's an extra safety.
It's an extra safety feature. So it's kind of a two pronged.
Great.
Thing, but that is another like another emergency return to plant is actually. If it if we didn't want it to go to either the outfalls because it wasn't up to where we needed it to be, it would return that.
Yes.
To the plant so that it could be reprocessed.
Great. And it's something that we really, that's like one of those things that we need. And then the other thing that is really, I mean, there's many things that are needed, but in in the spirit of. Preparing water for recycling for a secondary outfall or other purposes, the next thing would be. To upgrade our UV filtration system to ensure that we can reliably. Meet the grade class C water requirement. What we have right now in our um UV system is really outdated bulbs that are. Have to be ordered on eBay because the whole system is no is basically obsolete and is no longer in service. We have a roof on the building that's kind of falling apart. We have. It's just really um not uh a good situation. So. Uh, and then um we added on other needed electrical upgrades. This is kind of like. The cost and feasibility study would kind of look at what the needs are, what the cost possibilities are and um.
Would the engineers be figuring the costs out for us?
Yep, and I'm going to get to that. Um, the next piece of it would be um the T joint. So we got the UV, oh, the electrical upgrades. The T joint and a meter for hooking up to the potential future uh recycled water uses, including the secondary outfall or other possible uses. And then um number six is the legal and engineering consultation for the potential secondary outfall. And um. So if we did move forward with this, the way it would work is we would ask our attorney of record to prepare um a scope of work budget. That could then basically help us fill out that form to access the seven hundred and fifty. Because that form is like a technical form and it says, you know, has an engineer helped you figure this out? And. That's what we've done before with other things. We ask them for help and they say, here's what it will cost to do it. And then that's like the first step, then we approve it and then it would get kicked off. Well, first of all, we'd have to have it run it run it by. Business Oregon.
This is the next step in getting that to Business Oregon, correct?
Yeah. And they could come back and say, no, I suppose, but from everything we've, did you, were you able to clarify?
So one of the people who we've been in contact with is Toni Bean, and she had said, I wanted to clarify and get it in writing that we can use this. These this allocation for. What is specific, what are specific things that we have that we need to use it for? And the main. Information I got was that it needs to be to move port over towards water recycling, wastewater recycling. And so. That was her, that it's the the verbiage of the bill that was signed is is what we go by. And so. I have. An email into her and Reese sent it again today, actually. Um, I have it printed out um of. Getting that in writing because she said she really wanted to double check with her higher ups before she put it in writing to me. And I got that answer a couple of weeks ago, but then again, I followed up because I don't, she I haven't heard back from her. So um. That's the main piece is that Business Oregon is helping guide us through this of how that allocation. Can be used.
Excellent.
But that basically, whatever it is to make the money available, there is a one sheet form that has engineering budget, like all those facets. It doesn't have to be down to a. To a gnat, but but it does, those slots have to be filled.
Turns out to be not a lot of money to do all the things we need doing, but.
Right.
But it's not like a, it's not kind of like a bar tab where we can just go and say, oh, we paid this, we did that. It's like they have to get a proposal, they have to approve it and then.
Then it kind of is like a bar tab. Once you get that.
Yeah, but it's also like a grant where you have to do what you said you were going to do or that kind of thing. I think that's my.
No, but yeah, no, you're right though. It's like it is a little more of, once you get that original paperwork done, then it's kind of a reimbursement thing, but that's. This is, I mean, we're just doing the best with what we have to work with, really. Setting the stage. Um, so any other discussion on this water recycling proposal? I'll go ahead and call for the vote then. Counselor Rask.
Yes.
Counselor Pogwitz.
Tim, yes.
Counselor Tidy.
Yes.
Counselor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counselor Velises.
Yes.
Thanks.
Did I say Pogwitz?
You got me second. I was second.
Okay.
I don't know what that means, but I was pretty happy about it.
All right. So we are going to move on to item.
Nine B.
Nine B.
Nine B, fire department contract addendum. Lay it on us, administrator.
Uh, so. We have uh information with the fire department that we have a kind of a rolling situation when we, I was very, very new starting this. And there were a couple of addendums that the um fire board brought. that the Fire Board brought forward. And so basically, the Port Over Rural File Fire Protection, Protection Fire District has submitted an addendum to the Intergovernmental Agreement from 2021, which was when the contract was signed, to reduce confusion in the language of the contract. The following pages have the original contract redlined to include the proposed changes and the proposal submitted by Mari Lachas on May 22, 2024. And then the third item is not redlined because it's of the way that it's there. So if you go through the contract, so that starts on page seventeen. If you turn to page nineteen, the first change is in section six of Payment for Services 6.2. And the change was, it was written additionally for fiscal year 2023, the contract amount will increase another .075 dollars for a final contract rate of .65 of every thousand of the city's assessed value. Therefore, the contract rate will be .65 of every thousand cities' assessed value for the previous fiscal year. And the current verbiage, so the, the assessed value will be provided by the Currie County Tax Assessor. That's the first one. The second one had to do-
We talk about it one at a time, or are we going to do it?
If you'd like to talk about one-
Let her run through them, and then we'll get a motion, and then we'll have discussion.
Okay, so that's the first one. The second one is on page twenty. It's 7.5. Basically, it changes, the original language said, electrical and rent will be adjusted annually using the most current index published by the Bureau of Labor in the Western Region known as the CPI West. And water and wastewater increases will follow the city's base rate. Basically, and then this, this, the verbiage that has been struck is, these increases will be provided to the district in March of each year. The issue became that rent will be like that, but electrical rate will be based on the rate increases by Kuz-Currie Electrical Co-op. So it came up before that Kuz-Currie Electric did not change their rate, but because of the way this was written, we did do an increase, even though we didn't get the cost from, we didn't get the increase from Kuz-Currie, but yet we passed that on to them based on this verbiage, and we want to separate those two things. So rent, yes, but electrical will be charged to them at the rate that we are charged for it.
Kuz-Currie did have a rate increases last year.
Five percent.
Right, but I think on the, on the year that they were concerned with, it hadn't or whatever.
I understand. I just wanted to make sure you were aware, they did have one this last year. Just so you know, you can check with them, figure it out.
Okay. And I think it just means to, to tie it to what they're actually being charged, that we're not-
I understand.
-facing something, yeah.
Yep.
So it kind of protects both sides on that one.
Absolutely. So that was their only changes?
Yeah, they had, so the, so the addendum to this is on page twenty-five. And so the proposed addendum specifically, bless you, was again, the first section, 6.2, the fourth sentence about this, the assessed value. The second one had to do with making sure the electrical was cleared up. And three, in section 7.5, the annual CPI on rent to the firehouse will end this fiscal year to be renegotiated at the next contract renewal in 2025. So I think they wanted to see, to, to see if that change was amenable to you. The first two are actually in the document, and then this one would be talking about the CPI increase on the rent specifically will end this year, and that they want to renegotiate the rent next time.
So when does that come due? I mean, will it be like in, in next March of 2025? They won't, they're going to skip a increase of the year kind of thing, or are we going to get to it before? When does the rent come due for that?
I think, well, I know we were having the conversations before the end of the fiscal year, so I'm making an assumption here, I don't know for sure, but that was, I think, at the fiscal, at the fiscal year.
I would make a motion to approve the Fire Department Contract.
Second. Any more discussion on this?
Yeah, I, I have, I do have something. Your, your first, your first red line, mark out, was the increased cost. And what does the members of the district living outside of the city, what was their increase? Do you know that?
I don't, I don't know that.
Yeah, well, that's an important one to know. We don't know, you know, are, are we the only ones paying more? Are they paying more too? Or, you know, how's that work? Because it's, you know, this is just business here. It's not, do you like the Fire Department or not? This is, this is business, and it's more expensive to have a property outside of, of the city. And we have fire hydrants, and we pay for those fire hydrants with our city taxes and our, our water. And, and so we need to be getting, you know, not forget that a large, large amount of the infrastructure is being paid by, paid for by the, the higher rate payers or the people in the city that should be, it, if I recall correctly, there's been some attempts to try to equal that cost out, like everybody pays 50 cents. And that's just not, it has never been considered a, a split rate has always been considered the more fair way to do it. And so that would be my one question is, is what, what's their increased cost moving forward?
Brett, if I, I think if you remember correctly, when we had this negotiation, maybe you weren't here, it's still more expensive out in the county, if I'm not mistaken, I'm almost speaking out of turn.
I want to say it's either 98 or-
No, it is.
So, and I think this is just an extension of the last contract. We have to renegotiate in 2025, and that would be the time to, I think, address those kinds of concerns.
Well, they're, they're-
Right now-
They're asking for more.
We're locked in at that 65 cents a thousand, like that's, that, that wordage is locked in, but we're not going to increase-
Why is the addendum? What's the addendum?
The red line is because of, there was a question on the CPI. Like it was said that the most current CPI, and so the Fire Department read that differently than us this year. So that is why it just changed to the assessed value will be provided by, or it changed to the previous fiscal year. Because that wordage of the most current assessed value that was crossed out, that's where the first rub in this contract was, their commissioner, Harry and, and him and Dave kind of went back and forth on when the, the CPI, like it was kind of a mountainous molehill in a way, because-
Okay, well, I, I just want to be sure that we're, I, I, I read that different. I guess I'm recalling some events of the past and kind of-
No, and you're right. You're, 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 your train of thought is correct, but this particular item was just about the wordage of most current versus the assessed value for the previous fiscal year. And saying it's the previous fiscal year takes out that, that discussion of, are we going to use the half-year one or the, the one before that?
Because I think they were getting a little bit more money this way.
Yeah, they, they're- Cost us more money, yes.
And, and I talked to Mari LaChao a little bit about it, and they're having problems kind of like we are with like our VACON. They've got these old engines, and they're trying to keep them up. And they're having these yearly year things because there's no parts available. And so they're needing to build up a little bit of extra money to be dealing with the equipment, the, the bigger equipment.
My question was, so this year, 2024, we're at 65? And so, so it's the same as 2023? There wasn't an increase in, in the last year? Am I reading that wrong?
No, that's, I think you're reading it right, and that's why I was wondering, is that what it's going to be in 2025 also?
I think we're going to renegotiate in 2025.
What is assessed value? I think it's assessed value, or 65 cents might be the minimum, I don't know. I don't, is there a maximum?
I don't think there is. I, I can't rem-
They're saying here that, that it will be-
For this-
Thereafter, the contract rate will be .65 of the city's assessed value from the previous fiscal year. So they're going to, it looks like they want to keep it at then .65 of a thousand and then let the assessed value possibly climb, but not have the-
That's how it should work. We labored over getting that 65 number, and then the, like, the only question about this is the timeline of the CPI that, that it was used, like not the rates, not anything other than someone came in and said, hey, this is the most current assessed value, so that's when we should do it. And then the other side said, well, we can't do that because we can't see four months into the future, so we base it off of this one. So it's that, the whole precedent on that bullet point, that's the discussion. It's not about the actual rates or anything. The CPI increase was going to be the CPI increase. It was just a question of, are we using the one from six months ago or the one that's going to be coming up? Or, you know, that came out in that timeline, so.
Thanks for that clarification.
So I don't want to say there's nothing to it, but that's the only thing, is we're using the, the established one, the fiscal year. Everything's going to catch up. Everybody will get the same money. So that's what I love about math, it has nice concrete answers.
And I'd forgotten-
Are they using the same date? Are they using the same date to fill the?
They are, because we had a good discussion about that, because they use the, the Urban Price Index. It's like, hey, wait, we're rural, but turns out there only is an Urban Price Index.
And then it's just Western.
They should probably just call it the Price Index.
I think this is good, and as you said, Tim, any, if there are other concerns, I mean, this is a good time to just look at this, and then it's going to be renegotiated next year. So then we'll have the opportunity, if there are other things that are outstanding or of concern, that we can bring up.
And whoever's here, we need to be so on point with that, and we need to have such good relationships with the Fire Department. I don't know why there's always this little rub, but I'm just sick of it. Because if we're not working with the Fire Department, we're not doing something right, so.
Yeah, they're just so important to our community. And, and I think the comp, the partnership between the rural and the city is really huge for both.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote on that. Counselor Belice?
Yes.
Counselor Rask?
Yes.
Counselor Webb?
Webb, yes.
Counselor Tidy?
Yep.
Counselor Pogwitz?
Tim, yes.
And Counselor Burns?
Yes.
It's easier when you just go around it, so.
Isn't that weird?
You can't do that, though, no, because then people know that they're going to get called on for the vote, and you got to mix it up so that people don't have to be first every time, or last, more importantly.
You need to sweep the mucksticle sticks to see who you're starting with.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah. All right, so we are moving on to item. C, City Facility ADA Compliance Discussion, 2627, that's-
Yeah, so, so one of the things that we have a loan for our wastewater system with the USDA, so we still are paying that off. And I'm, I don't know the exact numbers, but it's basically, we're 30 years into a 40-year loan. And as we do that, whenever, just like when we have with the CBDG grants or BRIT grants or anything we do with federal funding, like working with the USDA, there are expectations that we stay current with particular things. One might be the language use study that, that we needed to do. The limited English proficiency plan that Counselor Rask kind of took a lead on with that. Another one is making sure that we do have fair housing information posted. Another one is making sure that we have things listed, that we are, you know, fair in our hiring practices and equal opportunity employer, and there's a lot of things. And one of those things is making sure that our ADA compliance is in effect. And so, right, so one of the things that we did is we had, in June of 2024, Billy McNerlin, which we appreciate him coming in, to look and do a self-evaluation of our buildings, because any public building needs to be ADA compliant. And so what we found are our buildings, our public facilities, City Hall, Community Building, Complex, Visitor Center, Buffington Park, Public Restroom, Buffington Park A-Frame, 12th Street Boat and Fishing Dock, Public Restrooms. We, they had, we had him do a self-evaluation, and we found that this and a few more, that in working with the USDA person, found a few more of them. So I'm going to talk about those, and we'll add them to this later. But the Community Building Complex, with our new grant for the Community Building, we're changing a lot of this because the ramp is too steep and we don't have good accessibility, but we're changing that with the grant that we're doing, with the entrance, for example. The Buffington Park A-Frame, the restroom within this building is not accessible owing to the space constraint, so that would be hard for someone to get in there. City Hall, our automatic entrance button does not work. She talked about the bathroom sink being too low, because then having a chair, for instance, to, to be under there. And also, one of the things from the USDA was, when you do that, even the pipes have to be covered so that there's not a burn on someone's legs, you know, you have to have it covered, which we don't. The, we also don't have an automatic door for that, so that's a heavy cumbersome door. Between the City Hall offices and the bathrooms, there's a bit of a threshold hump that's hard to get up and over. That could be difficult for someone. Also, there's a recommendation that the mirror not be any higher than 40 inches from the floor, so someone perhaps sitting in a wheelchair would still be able to look at themselves, just like someone who was standing. Things with handle, handbars and even the, there's a small wall between the commode and the sink in the first bathroom over here, and to have a certain radius for a wheelchair to turn around, that gets in the way. So we've identified things that we need to work toward, and I've been working with Superintendent Isador to make sure that as we go in or doing budgeting for next year and prioritizing, which is what we're talking about, making priorities and goals, doing that with him as well in our system, that we need to start clicking those things off to as we go. So it's something that we need to continue working on. Again, the big one that we're working on now is with the grant for the Community Building, but we will work through those things as we are able. But we see that it's an issue and we need to rectify those.
I believe there are multiple grants for converting ADA to ADA, so that might be helpful.
Right, parking too. There was another one, our parking, our ADA compliant parking lot out front has too much of a tip, and it's not enough, and there's not like a van thing.
There's ADA compliance for road signs and stuff? Sorry.
Stop it.
But, you know, like, I think just getting the, you know, every one of these things, as I'm like learning from doing grant stuff, it's kind of like, first you need to identify the problem, then you need to identify the cost to fix it, then you have to put together a proposal, and so like, there's a whole process. So I think getting this list is a good first start. And then even, for example, I was thinking to myself like, well, gosh, maybe the next time we get an electrician down here for something else, we can say, how much would it cost to fix these buttons, you know, or?
Right.
And then we would like know that information so that when the grant comes up, we could do a little, I mean, we could probably do like a $20,000 grant for this building or something.
Well, and it's, it's something that we're going to get smacked with if we are, we're acknowledging this right now. So this is a ball that we need to keep rolling and show progress on, because we just let the cat out of the bag. And ADA does not mess around. They're funded, it's a one phone call, and it should be, it totally should be this way, but it's a one phone call type of thing, so we really need to be careful with the ADA stuff we have going on.
And, and that's the whole point, is that we, it's the right thing to do, it's the law, and we want to make sure that we are making movement toward that as, as we can, and that it, again, is one of those priorities that kind of guide us on doing our work.
And one of the things, I mean, we didn't really talk about it earlier because we don't have it on the agenda. You know, we appointed Harry to be the Community Building Liaison, is that, I mean, there's a lot of elements in that building that are going to be, you know, the bathrooms, the hallways. I mean, it's not just the entrance. That building is going to become ADA compliant. So I feel like that will be a huge gain in this for us. And it's, you know, once-
But they, they did want a plan for how to fix the other things. You know, when they, when they asked for this review, they wanted you to submit a plan for how you plan to fix them.
And I think what we did for our plan was we said, we are going to work first on the Community Building, and we're going to bring the rest of it to City Hall, City, City Council. And so we are, you know-
We're doing what we said we were doing.
And I think what you've articulated is great.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's like, and we need, like, and there's, I hate doing things twice, but we could remodel one bathroom first. It doesn't have to be a men's, or it's not men's whims anymore, but like, just get that foothold, just buck up and call an electrician. Call Reece and say, next time you're in town, I need you for an hour. We don't want to spend the money, but this is, that, we need, we want to spend this money. We want to spend $300 to find out that this wire is bad or whatever it is.
I mean, fixing those buttons may be no big deal, right?
That's, yeah. And if it is, and it's over, it's a big cost, then then Melissa will have to come to us because she doesn't want to spend five grand without it. But if it's a couple hundred bucks for fixing something we got, then.
And I, and I think this is the part of like my reign of terror is find the low hanging fruit and do the things that we can do as it makes sense. And as we're, you know, being thoughtful about spending our taxpayers' money, but also about, you know, making it right. And so.
Being able to say, yes, we have made efforts for it. We would like to have done everything, but if you look at our budget, this is what we could do.
And they hear that. They definitely hear that. And the woman I'm working with in rural development has been lovely and has been helpful. So. There's other things that I might be bringing to you as far as, you know, vulnerability studies and different things with our facilities that are going to help.
It just doesn't. I don't know.
Yeah, don't, please don't, please don't do that.
Okay, so that is checked off the list. We're, you have reported what you need to report and done your duty. You know where we're at with it. So we'll keep plugging away. Now this big old discussion of nine D vacation of right of way discussions. We've had this. Few times before. I'm trying to be open minded to it because I feel like. A property is one thing we have and we don't know what the future holds. And it's, it's uh. But there, on the other side, there is revenue. Like if all these right aways did get vacated, we would get more.
I'm just wondering about. Um, we've talked about selling properties and whether that should be appraised. You know, by an appraiser and to sell the property. Um, that's being big vacated. Instead of just getting.
Point.
Yeah.
That is the point. We would, we, I don't think there's anything saying that to vacate it would just be given away. It basically is, it would be.
But we're just talking about the cost to the city to do the vacation is what. That's what I'm reading.
I would assume that that would be a planning cost that that would just get tacked on to them. Like the the vacation, think of it as as the term.
But I'm just saying that the property might be worth thirty thousand dollars or forty thousand dollars.
Right.
So, but we didn't, I didn't see anything about that or.
I think, I think this, so it's since I've been here, one of the things that I've heard, this is something that multiple citizens have brought to me. That this is a way and their, their line of thinking is it basically is the city and is the council willing to. Have this discussion and and go down this path to say that, yes, we are willing to do this. So as Ms. Bailey said earlier. If if the council is saying, no, we don't want to do this, then we need to say that, that no, we want to hold on to our assets. And we don't see this as feasible. Or, yes, we think this is feasible and we'd like to see people doing this. Well, then people will come forward to say we'd like to. Vacate the the right of ways. The first step in that, though, according to our code, is that our um. Superintendent of Public Works needs to certify in writing that there is no um.
Utilities.
Utilities in the, in the, in the right of way at this time. Now, do we, I mean, things to consider. Are we never going to have something in there? If there are things there, how do you deal with franchise fees or how do you deal with these other things? I mean, there's lots of questions. But I think this discussion, because it's been brought to me by many people, is are we as, are you as a council, not we, are you as a council. Willing to entertain this? I mean, is this something that you would?
Right. I'm just saying, are we gonna, are we thinking about selling it as a property that with value? Or are we talking about just. Getting the fees back.
I, my perspective is we would either make a profit out of it or not sell it.
Right.
And quite frankly, I I think Pat brought this up at the last meeting. How do we foresee the future? That a water pipe or a sewer pipe is not going to run through that thing at some point. And then would we be obligated to pay franchise fees to run that through there? I mean, that could negate any monies we made when we sold the property.
But it could be in a a condition of the sale.
It could that we get free access if we need it, I guess.
And that could affect the value too of the, they could get the property for a little less of the of the assessed value, maybe.
Most of this property isn't, well, I shouldn't say most.
I looked at the, at this property and it's a pretty nice piece of property, you know, it's not huge, but. And I. Yeah, I looked, it's only from um the happy tails. You know, within is, I guess that's, I didn't realize that there's a street in there, but. But there's a wet lawn, wetland on the other side, I think. And then.
So how many feet is it?
My, my own thinking on this would be um, I, rather than do it on a case by case scenario, like I think we should. I think if we were going to do this, we'd want to look at it in a bigger picture because Melissa said we could get, we could get fifteen of these. Um, Jen has said, or in this application, it says there's going to have to be a lot line adjustment. Um. We would have, as you said, we would have to get an appraisal or a tax assessment. We'd have to figure out like a whole process. We have to figure out if there are utilities in ground, over ground. What if like, you know, Kuzkury Electric has the franchise, but it's not in ground? There'd be like quite a number of things that we would have to figure out. And that would take a lot of staff time and research to start down the path. So to my thinking. Step back earlier, I would like the, I would recommend that the finance committee look at that list of things to do. And pick up the top three. And if this is on the top three of things that we'd like to do, then. Then, you know, then what, when is the staff going to do all this research? I mean, it's going to fit into a list of other things that have to get done. But to me, we would want to know all those things before we started because otherwise Jen's going to pay. Or in in is the seven fifty enough for the staff time to do all this stuff? I don't know. But we'd want to figure all that out so we don't get. Jen applying, putting in her seven fifty and being ticked off if it's going to take two years or if we then find out like, oh, my gosh. You know, it could be great, but I think there's a lot of unknown questions.
I don't think, you know, seven fifty goes pretty quick.
I know. Didn't seem like much.
Bucks an hour. It, you don't get enough time to sort anything out. Like you said, there's so much to sort out in this. I, I really don't, I, I.
I was just thinking maybe at this time.
Go of anything at this point.
I mean, I'm looking at number four on the hearing and decision. And one of the stipulations is that the public interest will not be prejudiced by the vacation of the public way. But this is Port Orford. And I don't know if we've ever made a decision that wasn't, you know.
Right.
Causing contention for someone else. I just, it just caught my brain, catches things at the last minute.
Something that occurs to me is, you know, if if we get this BRIT grant and are able to fix our water system. You know, we're probably going to need to get into some of these right of ways. And if we've transferred them to somebody else. You know, maybe that's not such a good thing.
It it could be a condition of the sale and it could be that the property assessed value is just a little less because of that condition. And there'll be some that won't ever need it, you know, because of their location, which just could be one.
And another way we could approach it, if we wanted to do it, and I think you were going to ask what are the benefits? And I think the benefits could be that. You know, it's a, the city doesn't have to have the responsibility of it and that the city could get tax revenue.
Moving forward.
Or, you know, once we do our ADU uh ordinances, maybe people would use the space to do that. I don't know. There could be some benefits. But um, as I said, there's all those other things, but we could also do like a pilot project, like part of the city and say, we'll. Consider this in like quadrant A and see how it works or something. I don't know, because it just seems like there's a lot of. Unknown questions. And then somebody's not want to do it, the neighbors aren't going to want to do it or, you know, is.
Well, there's something in here that says both neighbors would have to gr- agree.
Right, to the applicant to be.
What if they don't agree?
Yeah, why, why wouldn't they be like, well, I would also like that right away.
Or they split it, like in this case, they're splitting it.
Okay. And that, and that's great that these two people can come together and come to that conclusion, but I guarantee you, there's two neighbors out there in Port Orford. That won't agree to that. And then.
Then it doesn't happen.
You just deny it to both of them, I guess. I don't know.
But it's a lot of, it's, it's a lot of time and effort.
Oh.
Process. And so that's, you know, just looking at like all of these things that we're.
And we don't know the county side of it and what it entails to make these adjustments and do these things and how. Much it would take, like, I mean, how much Crystal's time? How mu- it's like, we know how cumbersome this stuff is.
I mean, if this property, say, sold for fifty thousand, well, the money would be there, but it's the staff time there.
That's what I'm saying. Once you see, yeah, so we made fifty thousand, but we had to uh.
Not do this.
And we opened up ourselves a candleworm for per- perpetuity of everybody else that wants to to discuss this.
The thing about it is seven hundred and fifty dollars is fifteen hours. Can staff do what needs to be done in fifteen hours? I don't think so. I would, I would estimate that that number would have to double to get you anywhere near. Close to how many hours staff would have involved in in getting there. And I could be way off. I mean, it could be.
Even more.
Yeah, it could be even more than that, but I know, I don't think they can do it in fifteen hours, honestly.
Not to mention council hours.
And I think too, one of the, I mean, I. I appreciate that. And I think this is where I would like, whether it's this council or the new one that comes in to to have. Some, some things that you folks want to to have happen, like some goals that you folks have said, like, yes, these are the, these are our main priorities. And these are the things that we really want to work toward for, for my staff so that we can be focused on those things and like. What, what are your priorities? What would you like to get done? And then, and this could be an example of one of those. If this was something that was like, yes, this is a priority, we really want to look at this because the financial, the finance committee has said, yes, this makes sense. And we'd like to look into this, then that would make sense. But there's just, there's a lot of things to do.
And I have, I have a photograph of the um. The sheet that got written on.
Right, right.
And of all the different priorities we set at that time. And that would be something probably for the new council to do again.
And I think that we have, I mean, we have priorities right now, which are like making things work better, you know.
Right. Absolutely. Oh, absolutely.
And that's a plate full.
Yeah, it is a plate.
We have some serious deficits in some of our policies. And we really need to, as a council, consider getting those policies up towards the top of the list. Because what happens is these policies being lax are causing staff time and monies.
And confusion and people being upset.
To attorneys and I mean, it's getting out of hand.
So we just need to get them on the agenda.
Yeah, those policies.
And then hammer it out.
Take one at a time, but have them listed at some point.
We did garden meters, people.
We did get on that one.
And a lot of work.
That took a long time, too.
I thought that was going to be easy too.
Are we going to put a placeholder on this? I mean.
I would like to keep this discussion open. I just personally don't know that we're. We have the capabilities right now to just put this at the top of the list.
Right. And it's, yeah, even to to figure out if it's a bene- like the benefit to the city is a chore in itself.
Yeah. I, it would be really cool to take one of these little pieces of property and. If we want to throw some money at it to figure it out is get an appraisal done on it. See if we're talking about an amount of money that even makes any sense to. Somebody wanting to buy it or if it makes sense to the city going through the process. I mean, you know.
It could be too little to.
Yeah, it could be seven thousand dollars for this piece and maybe, and I don't have no idea. I just, that's just.
Or do you just set, do you just set a square foot price for right away property? Just set that precedent of if we're going to do this, this is square foot price. I don't care what the assessed value is because we're having to do this paperwork. So. It's this big, you pay this much.
And that could be, if that's legal, that might be a possibility. And when you're dealing with that kind of stuff, I don't know what the legalities are, but we'll find.
That's the thing. And that's really the rub for me right now is how many times have we said? In the last three meetings, we don't have the staff time for that. And now we have this whole new multifaceted thing with the constituent that just wants an answer. And I, we want to keep it on the bone, but we're not going to give them a decisive answer tonight that that's going to.
Well, I I heard Jen say, and I really appreciate her saying, I don't want to put the money into this if you guys aren't going to get to it. And I, I would hope that. Since she does attend meetings, uh, maybe without pleasure, uh, that she knows that we have a lot of things. That are, there's a lot of things we're really needing to work on that are high priority. And I wish we could do them all faster, but. There's only so many hours in the day. So I, my, my vote would be to put it on the back burner. And as I said, like, Tim, if you're, if the finance committee decides. That this is like one of the top ones, there's some, there's some that may be lower hanging fruit we want to do first. And then.
Because this is going to take just to get some kind of a ballpark figure and then find out what a property may be worth. It's going to take some time and some. Some effort.
And I, I will add, I'm aware that the council in like the nineteen nineties dealt with this and it would be interesting to go back and look at the minutes, but. Um, I've been told that they looked at it and decided to not proceed with it because of many of the complications.
And now we have a beautiful trails. That's a great example. Because of that instance, we have a beautiful Fort Point trail now. Because that council decided not to relinquish that right away. Not even a consideration at that time, not even an argument other than the precedent of, hey, it's the city right away. We shouldn't give that away.
So have, have we ever done, do we know if we've ever done a vacation?
And of what I've known, there's, that is the only discussion I've had and it came back to the table for a couple of different councils. It was that Fort Point. Road, you know.
Joseph.
Best answer to that would probably be to ask the councils who, counselors who have been sitting the longest because part of the requirement is getting approval from city council. So if Counselor Pogwitz or Mayor Cox have not seen it, then it hasn't happened since they've been on the council.
I don't recall it ever happened.
No, and that's the only recollection is that up at Fort Point, that fourth street. Got the trail in right now. They wanted to vacate that, which is pretty like, that seems like a pretty suitable, when you own the point and you own the house. It like, I would probably also try to get that done too, but it's a good, I'm glad you brought it up because it's a good example of maybe why you. Do want to measure twice and cut once. And I'm also interested now. Like on the regular like this for, for private citizens or is it more like, hey, we have this entity, this is an enterprise zone. We have this big corporation, but we need a little bit more room. So can you vacate that property? Like, I'm not familiar with the processes.
And this is our ordinance.
No, this is a ordinance. This is not our ordinance.
We don't have an ordinance.
Really?
There was a big discussion. The uh Battle Rocks, um, the Hogland project. Uh, there's quite a bit of a discussion there, um, because of the the park area, the the street area, when did it start, when did it go? And um, I had spoken to Chris and Chris and I don't see eye to eye on a lot of different things, but. Um, he explained to me some of the benefits that could come from something like that. And I mean, I um. You know, if it's, if we, to me at this point, I, I mean, like maybe today, we don't think. Uh, sixty grands i- i- is worth fooling with if you could pull it off uh uh in a year, sixty or fifty or thirty or something, but. Maybe next year, it's uh, I, I don't see where, I don't see where any growth is occurring. And I see expenses increasing and the same thing's going to happen next year. So um, maybe we need to to stay grounded. And not think too big here and and stay, you know, just keep it real. And we got, we got bills we're not going to be able to pay here pretty soon. That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I don't think we should table this by no means. I, you know, and and uh hide it away, but I, I just think maybe there'll be a better time. To do this. And Fred did just bring up another good example of a right away that did happen in our lifetime that got evacuated. And that is. The Red Fish right in front of the studio there where that parking lot was that all got evacuated. Like that was a sore spot for a lot of people in town that we evacuated something for a private business, not prime real estate.
That was a right of way use that can be revoked at any time.
No, it was. It wasn't evacuated.
He, but he paid for all, he paid for the concrete and and that sidewalk was there before too. I mean, it was. It was a change that people didn't want to see, right? I mean.
He us do that, but it was, it's still a right of way.
It's still it.
Sorry.
It's still a right of way. That's the problem. That's, that's the problem with a lot of people is they, um, why should. Any of this be happening on the city right away? Why isn't it his parking lot? Well, he wanted to buy it. He tried to buy it. And so, you know, which, which is worse. Now we're paying for his um parking or he could have been paying for his parking. To me, it's kind of a simple one when you really think about it, but but apparently it's. To me, it's kind of a simple one when you really think about it, but, but apparently it's still some, you know, I think a lot of times we get.
Yeah, I thought that it got vacated. I didn't know it was just a right of way. I, that was my mistake.
Yeah, yeah. No, 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 but he, he was like to him.
It was, yeah. Not very happy with just the right of way.
Right. That's what, and that's the nature of this. There is so much to every one of these conversations. Every one of these conversations have a neighbor that's not going to even maybe be aware of it until they get contacted. Neighbor wants to vacate the right of way.
It's so tied into the use. It's, 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 we're not, you know, uh, we, we are, uh, we're, we're, um, you know, we're selfish people. You know, if, if I don't like what my neighbor's doing, I'm not gonna want him to get the street to do it. But if I like what he's doing, if he's putting a YWMCA in there, and they're gonna be playing, um, basketball with the kids in the evenings, then man, let's do it, right? So, you know, whatever. I just, we get tied to.
And the ordinance, which one of these is a separate decision. So it's kind of like, it took us an hour.
Yeah.
Through the consent calendar tonight that had two right of ways. And so, you know, and that, those were really simple ones.
But you bring up another point. We have an ordinance on the books. All somebody has to do is follow this ordinance, and we would be holding to do the process. So I don't know.
We would be, but I think Jen realizes that, but was saying if she's gonna just get to, and if we're gonna get to the end and say, gee whiz, this is gonna be.
I know, but how can we possibly answer that question right now?
Right, right.
Basis. And that is the gamble of working with government, I guess, just like the other instance we had tonight. We just need the information. And it's, we're, we're the people that make the, the decisions on the information that's brought to us. And that's why we're having such the memorandum of understanding and everything that's going on with the golf courses. Cause we just need a little bit more information. And this is another one that it's hard to answer Jen directly of, like, we can't say if we're gonna be amiable to it or not until we know all the facets of it, which we're pretty familiar with this one. And it is pretty cut and dried and, and makes sense. So I guess the only thing we need to consider is the repercussions.
The ordinance is, you know, if our ordinance is or tight, then, then someone, a developer or some, somebody could, uh, you know, from Dublin, Ireland, take a look and say, the poor person's the place. You know, the, uh, it's not, well, let's go over there and see if maybe they're gonna make, you know, I think that, uh, vague, you know, it's, uh, like legislating from the bench. We hear about, um, the evils of legislating from the bench. Well, if, if lawmakers did a better job making laws, that wouldn't happen. And so here we are.
Gotcha. So we have an ordinance on the books. We know we want to explore a little bit more. Uh, it might end up being a finance committee discussion. What decision do we have in front of us right now? Other than like the answer to Jen is we don't have an answer right now, and it's kind of ambiguous. But the ordinance is on the books, and people can do whatever we like. It's just hard to say, oh, yeah, we'll probably do it or no. Cause then it, it like makes it worse on the other side, too, if we are.
And I think this one just, it's a discussion. I don't know.
Right. No, that's, but I, it is a discussion. We're not deciding anything. I'm just saying that, that when.
I would make a motion that we, we, um, ask the finance committee to consider this option amidst other options for revenue generation and make a recommendation on whether this is a priority. And then they can look at it in the context of that. I mean, that's an idea, unless you think.
I think that'll work. And then, of course, we'll present what we have to council, and then council will have to make a decision on it.
Was that a second?
Second.
Yes. Any discussion on that? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Councillor Tidy?
Yes.
Councillor Burns?
Yes.
Councillor Rask?
Yes.
Councillor Webb?
Webb, yes.
Councillor Pogwids?
Tim, yes.
Councillor Velices?
Yes.
Okay. Good stuff, guys. Uh, where are we at now? Right now, we're on continuing action items. Um, do we have any?
I hope it's not.
Citizens, what?
I was just trying to decide if it's dark.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Summer's flipping out of our hands, isn't it?
Okay, uh, any citizen considerations online?
Yes. Jen Bailey here. Um, I really appreciate your discussion, and I understand all of the issues. I really do. Um, yet, as a property owner, I do want to pursue this. So I appreciate that you're giving me a path forward here with the finance committee. Um, and again, I'm not trying to argue my particular case right now, but I do feel compelled to point out in this particular situation, the goal here is to not develop the easement. Um, there are public utilities there. I'll, Brian and I would sign any kind of, you know, anti-development easement. Um, I just feel strongly that I'm taking care of it. I'm doing a better job than you guys can. And I have a big issue with it being, um, a public path into my backyard. I've got drug deals going, you know, in the past two years. I've had people trying to camp on my place, on my property, but they access it through that easement. I've had drug deals. I've got sketchy neighbors. I've got a ton of dog shit back there. You know, I, I'm basically just trying to protect my property. So again, I'm not trying to make my case right now, but I do feel like I want to path forward. And this finance committee idea is fine with me. And obviously, yes, money, I get it.
That's hugely helpful, Jen, for, thanks for sharing that context.
Thank you, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you, Jen. Any other considerations online from citizens? Okay, council, anybody got anything?
I do. I, I, sorry, Timmy, go ahead. I'll go, I'll go real quick and then I'll be still. I, uh, you know, I, I, I'd listen to Jen there, and I can't for the life of me see why in the world we wouldn't want to protect this person at our own profit. And like she said, we're not caring for the property. We're not taking care of it. And we could just get paid to not have to hassle with it. So I, I, I just, I feel, I feel for, for her. I do. And she's been quite patient, I think. Um, she's trying everything she can do. I don't know what's next for her if we don't give it to her. If we, you know, if, if it's not something that works out, I don't know what, what, what she might do next. So anyway, I, I guess I would urge you to think about, um, how you might feel if that was your, your, your home, your place.
I wonder why there's so much, well, I mean, so basically what Jen said can apply to anybody. I mean, we have the same type of problems coming across the right of way onto my property, to be honest with you.
Right, and you should be able to buy that.
But I wonder, I wonder why that area is so, so bad. Is it, is it because? I don't know.
Well, she, she's got property, if you.
Oh, my goodness, because I live in a horrible place in town, Tim.
Cause you what?
I live in a terrible place in town.
Yeah, but I didn't realize you had that much traffic back over there.
Oh, hell, yes. I'm sorry. I will shut up now. I just felt compelled to say. Do you realize where I live? The situation on Eighteenth and Jackson? My, my property's a straight path to that.
Right behind your house. And it goes right through that. And they're, because it's so close to town.
Okay.
Main Street.
Okay.
And, and, and they know that they can get, go back there and do that because they're just hanging out, looking for places like that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get with Gary and, uh, see if he'll take me over there to take a look. I'd like to take a look, too. Okay?
Did you do everything that you want to do with the right of way permit, Jen? Like, could you come and say, I want to clear this out and block off this and, and then just go ad-accepted?
No, I, I've actually been cracking up all evening about your discussion about trees in the right of way. My goal is actually to protect the trees in the right of way.
No, but I'm saying like, like, your goal is to open that up and to protect your property, right?
No, not to open it up, to, um, keep clearing out all the trash. I've hauled away tons, literally tons of stuff, to control the invasive species and to be able to put up no trespassing signs. So I have some kind of control about what's going on in my yard.
Really, it's not trespassing signs. I mean, that will give you the protection from what you're, the, the harm.
Could she?
Yes, that, that is most of it. Also, you know, as I've shared, you, you guys probably won't remember, but I love my place because I've got wetlands on two sides. And, uh, I consider myself a steward of the land, and I am already taking care of the easement, mind you. I'll continue to do so, but I would just prefer to control it directly, frankly.
So with a right of way permit, that could happen sooner than later as we may or may not work towards the other goal. But I think with a right of way permit, you could even put up no trespassing signs. Could she not?
I don't, I don't know. And I'm, I guess I'm wondering if there's a fence or if we allowed her to put a fence or something on the right of way, which we usually don't.
Yeah, we do it all the time.
We do it all the time.
I mean, you guys could approve that, that, that we, she could put a barrier up to something like.
Was your goal to put a fence up?
Well, definitely along, um, Sixteenth, and I, I, I still have to figure out along, like, Tichner per se. Because again, there's active easements there. You know, Kuzcuri Electric has got a couple transformer boxes and an overhead line. And I don't want to interfere with access to any of that.
Right.
So.
Okay, well, we'll be discussing, um, this on the twenty eighth, I believe, at the finance committee. We won't get anywhere on that day, um, other than how we want to go, I believe. We probably will at least get there. But I would definitely.
Explore the idea.
Explore the ROW because that's something that could happen perhaps at the next council meeting.
Cause you might be able to come up with something on a right of way permit that would be just like you owning it, say, and not having to pay anything for.
Yeah.
That, that could, that, that.
Until we got to the point of knowing what to do with the vacations.
Again, I have no plans to develop that piece of land regardless. So that, that might work for me.
Cool. Yeah, that's, yeah, exactly. And I've been with the city fifteen years, and I can't remember taking a right of way permit away from anybody. Um, so.
Worst case scenario is you rip it out because you have to work on a line, and then they can put it back how it was. And it's always a bummer. There was, uh, on Gear Circle, there was a lady who had a beautifully landscaped yard. A water line blew up. It was contentious, but it's like, sorry, that's like part of the right of way permit when you did that landscaping. This is exactly why we have to do the paperwork.
But as long as, as long as an applicant knows that going in, then, then everybody's happy at the end of the day. So.
And even if they don't know that, it's written down in black and white enough to where we could say sorry in ten years if it happens, you know?
And you could have that done at or by our next meeting.
I would encourage you to.
If it's acceptable for me to put up no trespassing signs.
That might be the discussion, but it.
The fence kind of insinuates that.
Fence insinuates it, but I don't think you could do that without being the owner. I don't think you can say no trespassing. The city might be able to say no path through here or no, no public access, you know, like we do. I mean, we, we have problems.
That becomes a can of arms.
You're right, though, for sure. I mean.
We could definitely have that discussion.
I think there's, I think we can definitely.
Well, you could put a fence up and put a no trespassing sign in the middle of your yard, and they wouldn't be able to tell the difference, and we'd be all covered.
I would, I would definitely explore this, and, and it'll give you a little bit of time before the deadline to have that a- application in for next meeting. I would just, I would think about, just think about what we discussed here, and it might work for you. And, you know, it may not, but it might. It would save you a couple of dollars, too.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You, Jen.
Cause you could put a no trespassing sign in the middle of the yard, and people wouldn't be like, oh, well, that doesn't mean right here on the part of the fence. Yeah, either way, but there's ways to skin that cat. What do we got else?
On that other right of way up at Fort Point, they have like no trespassing.
Yes, they do.
All right along their property on the right of way.
Actually, yeah, they keep moving their signs, but anyway, I won't.
But that is, that's on their property, though.
Yes.
And that's would be the difference is because her property stops and she wants the fence off the right of way, so put in that sign. But that doesn't mean she can have a big red sign over on the very corner of her property saying no trespassing.
Here.
To go in with the fence, yeah.
And then have a couple of those no trespassing signs there. I don't know.
There's, so councillor concerns. What else do we have? Was that, did you have more, Gary?
Yeah.
I have one more, too.
Oh, that was Brett. I'm sorry. You never got to. Go ahead.
Um, th- there's been some issues with, um, crime in the community and, um, and so I wanted to make the council aware that I'm, with their consensus, um, try to start a citizens watch group in town and see if there's any. There's, um, I ended up doing some research, and there's other communities that, um, are covering a lot of, they're helping their law enforcement by kind of being an additional, um, there's, and, and it, it doesn't necessarily mean, um, physically being out watching necessarily. There's a lot of other things that can happen that a group can pull together with signage and cameras and, um, I mean, there's just a whole lot to explore.
Last time we did that, there was, um, a group that decided they would be out chasing people around in vehicles and that kind of thing. And don't get me wrong, I'm not against this at all. We just need to make it clear to folks that they can't form a vigilante group.
Because there is actually a, uh, national, a national program.
Yeah, right.
That we would try to, so everybody would understand.
Yep.
And, and I'm feeling like this could keep everybody safer by having, you know, something organized rather than, because they're talking about doing it now without. And I mean, I don't know if people are gonna go walking around with guns or what is gonna go on, but, um.
That's what, kind.
But this would be trying to.
Yeah.
I think, Gary, you asked, I think, Gary, what you're asking for is that you asked us for your support in doing that. And I think that that would be, I don't, I mean, individually as, as individuals, maybe, um, a councillor might offer his support to it, but for us to support that is significant thing. And this was done a few years back, and civil rights become an issue immediately. Anybody walking the streets at eleven AM is not a thief. And that's what it became. And there was assaults and all kinds of ugly shit. And I'm telling you uglier than what, you know, people getting their cans or gas stolen. It's uglier when there's people walking the streets with guns. So I, I just really caution you to, to, to keep everybody, um, calm and.
We would be in, involving our police department in this. I talked to the chief. And, um, so every time the group met, we, there could be an officer there that would, um, be helping form the group and what they do and what they can and can't do and.
However, I'm sorry, can I interject right there? But it wouldn't, this would not be a city sponsored thing. This would, there would, no part of this would be a city, um, affiliation at all. They would be there to perhaps advise or to help maybe, you know, in, in that capacity. But I think we would be, the city would be opening itself up to huge liability if we.
But other communities have gone through whatever needs to.
And, and as a separate entity, I think that that would make sense. I'm just raising a, a flag as far as we, I think we would have to be just really careful that this would not be a city affiliated situation because we couldn't control what would happen with it or whatever.
Or be responsible.
Or be responsible for it or whatever. I think that's, you know, we, just, just to be really clear about that is that this would not be a city endorsed. I would, I would suggest it should not be a city endorsed situation because then we would be held liable for this group's behaviors, good, bad, or otherwise. And I think that would. And I think that would not be a great idea for us.
Well, what happened last time, I think, is the, the group had good intentions when they started. Then a couple of the people got a little out of control and they were chasing people down in vehicles. I mean, somebody can get run off the road and flip over and die. I mean, do you remember any of this? You don't remember any of this?
Oh, my gosh.
I do, I remember every bit.
Yeah.
I remember every bit.
When it was, when Marvin was here, it was out of control. I think it must have been Marvin because I think he finally just shut, he, he said, no, we can't be doing this. And the council agreed.
And that was, there was no city affiliation then, right? It was just.
Well, well, there, there, there was loosely. And I'm not going to drop names, but there was an association between, I'm not even saying, there was, there was, it was scary. It was scary. And I'm, I'm, I'd rather have a, I, I mean, this, we can't fool people's rights to walk the streets at 3:00 AM. The, the, you know, our, our founders bought and died so that we could walk the streets at 3:00 AM. And, and.
We do a lot of night walkers in this town who go, like to go out and look at the stars. I do know that.
I see them, you know, I imagine, I live behind Circle K and the alley. And there's one 24-hour store and there's one light out back. And I, there, there's deep out and I, a lot of them. And we may or may not find it soothing or, or you know, comforting to, to know that they're out there, but they're entitled to that, they're entitled to that. I just, I, I.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not like thrilled to be starting a, a group.
Yeah, no, I understand. I just, I just really want.
But I'm willing. There's, the problem exists and it's only going to probably increase with the county, county situation.
Well, we, we have, we've got, you know, there's a, there's a term that's used in, in law enforcement. I don't know if Hank's there, he could probably tell you what it was. But when, when, when Hank first came to town, all the crime was occurring in town. And the, him and his, his crew there did such a good job that crime increased out of town. And next thing you know, there was hardly anything going on in town. And I wonder, are we, are, you know, is it our response that has, is falling short? Or is it the county's ability to house criminals that is, is more responsible? Because I, I would argue the latter and, and if you could have 100 people on neighborhood watch and if there's nowhere to take anybody to jail, then, you know, it's just, it's, it's a shitty deal. I, I, I see it both ways, I really do. And, and I just, I saw some, some, I saw something with my own very eyes last time, Gary. And it was, you know, it reminded me of what Alabama must have looked like in, in, in the early 60s. And I was appalled. And, and I will carry what I saw to my grave. And I can't imagine us as a city being partnered to it. So that's all I'm asking is to be very careful with what we say, you know, with what we say, the words we use, you know, the simple words. They're not, they're not, you know, they're not speakers or they're Americans walking the street at 3:00 AM. That's what they are and should be treated with that respect. Okay.
So I think everybody's supportive of the idea. You'll have a really hard time getting city backing or approval or any sort of, we're, you know, together because of the liability angle of it. But you've also learned that these things didn't work. That doesn't mean a group of people can't go look into getting cameras or some other, like it's 2024. It doesn't have to be people with pitchforks and torches walking around Jackson Street at night. So there's definitely merit. I think everybody's supportive of the idea, but, but when you said consensus, I know that made the hair on the neck, my back and, and her too. And that, that is what you're probably not going to get unless you come with just a bulletproof proposal of this is what we're doing and we partner with this. But you already have Hank say that he would go to the meetings and support you guys as far as the structure of it. So I don't think you learned anything that should hold you back. You know what I mean? You just heard the, the other worst side of it, but I hope it didn't dissuade you. Because there is merit to it. Just talk with Tim after the meeting.
The, the bad stuff that they don't want.
No, I was, in some of my investigation, it said that that was one of the downfalls. And there are a number of downfalls. And, and like I say, I'm not like looking to be involved in another group. I'm quite.
But I think, but I think people.
You've done so much, Gary.
Keep one another's. Thing. I mean, that, looking out for your neighbor, make, checking in with your people, making sure that that happens. Like that is what community is. And so, I mean, that obviously is what we want and what we have in a lot of places. It's just, again, as speaking for like the city side of it, just, I just have to be really careful.
Concerns me that you say it's starting, organizing is starting to happen on its own. You know, and if it's not something that is peacefully oriented, that's really concerning.
I, that's what concerned me about and things escalating without any kind of guidance at all.
But that's the pitfall is the human nature of it. And you're opening up that door.
But I mean, if we don't, if I don't do anything, I feel there's as much of a chance of a bad thing happening as.
Yeah.
People have real.
We have to pay them.
Well, they.
Doing this because.
Because they don't realize that.
You can booby-trap your property and be sued for that.
Right.
There's people that have booby-trapped their homes, somebody broke in.
You're not allowed to set a trap, yeah.
Yes, exactly. You.
You're not allowed to set a trap for a human being ever, ever under any circumstance.
What I'm trying to say is you gotta be very careful what you do or you're going to find yourself in civil court. If not jail or prison, that's, I'm not, I'm, I know you have enough common sense not to get there.
I think Barry and Deep used to be the neighborhood.
Last time this happened, when Marvin was here, there were some people doing some pretty crazy stuff to try to deter who they thought were criminals. Some of these people were just people out, like Brett said, roaming the streets.
You look like criminal. And another thing might be Melissa.
What? Um, yes, ma'am. Gee, um, it's my mad time, I'm tired, I'm sorry.
Well, just that if, if there is concern about crime that's being voiced, I know you, you are monitoring Facebook, Gary, and so you get a lot of sense from the community about those things. Then, you know, maybe we could ask you to just check in with Hank on, or just make sure he's aware of that concern and.
And, and he is, and we have had conversations and I've heard from people and, and he is continuing to, you know, move his people around and keep shifts moving as much as possible. It's just, we're just so on the razor, we don't have 24/7 accountability all the time. And that is what makes it really, really hard. And he is aware.
Comment how cheap those outdoor motion lights are that you can literally stick on with Velcro or screw into your fence. It's been night and day difference for our house. And I have nice neighbors that are like, hey, we keep getting hit. We, we put some motion lights on your fence and it works.
It makes a big difference and they're cheap. And I know, you know.
Trying to make sure they're shielded.
I, and, and that was going to be my next comment. And I know that we want to do our very best to protect our dark sky, but there's at times I feel without these kinds of lights that you're not protecting your property. So we.
But you can do, but I guess what I'm saying is I think we know from looking into that.
My point down at the ground, but.
We can do it.
Without my lights, I feel I would have a lot more trouble out there on the loop than I do currently. So.
And it's the season. It, it, this is the season when everything ramps up. It's, things are getting colder, people are on the move from point A to point B. There's probably twice as many transient people than we see or realize because they're on the move more. But they still, they still, I mean, I don't really know, I don't have a whole lot of experience being transient. But it seems like everybody does kind of touch base and the city center's on their way through, so.
And they hunker down in the winter.
And, you know, there's also a lot of people in town that are just bone poor, that have houses and aren't the people out there cutting hoses. They're really probably stealing gas to get to work the next day.
And there are people that are coming through. They're, they, they arrested that one guy that was stealing fuel out of the tanks just out of town. And they had cameras on their tanks and they actually got the guy in Coos Bay. He was driving, he was filling his pickup up and his wife's car. There were newer vehicles. So we have people out there that are, you know, they know better and they're still doing these things. I, for whatever reason, people feel they're entitled to other people's stuff. I don't get it.
People are just horrible.
Sometimes people are just horrible.
Why you're different.
Oh, my God, we're devolving people. Yeah, I have one more thing.
Other than that, Gary?
No.
Thank you for bringing that. Did you get some sort of, just?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I'll see if there's a flow.
Yeah, not yet.
I'm, I'm pretty sure the police chief would say the same thing if he met with the group. Proceed with very
He would.
Extreme caution because.
Want to investigate all the ways of doing something that don't involve people going around.
There were signs available here at the city for the, the neighborhood watch.
We have one of those.
One actually got put over on Portofort Loop kind of by my property. But there may be more of those signs sitting around in public works or something. And that might be something to ask. Because I think there's things like that that can be done that don't get the city in trouble.
Just put signs up all over town and.
Well, people, generally people just need to be out and aware of what's going on and not have their heads tucked wherever. I mean, it's our responsibilities to kind of protect our own properties. Not easy to do at times.
So can I bring up my last thing?
I don't know. Gary, are you finished?
I'm done.
So this is like a, a big topic, so I won't, I'll just bring it up lightly or to see what you guys think about it. Since we are having this discussion about beginning this MOU with ERPD, you may recall two years ago, it was before I was on council, the county just changed all the zoning out there and there was nothing we could do about it because we have a joint management agreement with the county that does not, that's super weak and does not give us any say-so. And at that time, again, it was before I was on council, but I know some council members at that time, Councillor Tidy and Kessler came down and observed a county commissioner meeting that, you know, basically did ignore us. We said, we got to get back to this joint management agreement and just add into it. Basically, I think the thing that needs to be added into it is that if they're going to change the zoning out in the UGB, they have to connect and coordinate with us. So it seems like it's probably a really good thing to pick that up and try to, to do that. So I guess I'm just raising the question, yeah, of what you guys think of that. And I don't know if the county has capacity or if we have capacity, but it seems like it might be a good time to, to pick it up. And I think what it would entail is just having a, starting a conversation and seeing if that's something that we can do.
And it's a different county commission now.
Yes, I think it would be a good county commission right now, or right now, which kind of makes me wish we had done it sooner because I think they, they do understand the idea of, you know, yeah, not rolling over what citizens want.
So how do we get that back on the agenda? There wasn't a whole lot of heavy lifting to it. Like you say, it was.
Well, I think, I mean, the, the, the way we get it on the agenda is I can put it on the agenda and ask you guys, hey, can we do this? Or, you know, I could call one of the county commissioners and say, hey, we'd like to do this. Do you guys have any bandwidth to do this? Could we do this? Or at one point, I think actually even one of the state planners said, we need to, we need to get back and, and fix that. So I could, we could even ask her if she would help us with that. Anyway, it's just, I know it's yet another one of like our many things that we have to do. But I guess I'm just, I guess I'm looking at it out front and thinking, this is coming. If this happens and we don't get our ducks in a row, we'll be back in the same situation and think, why didn't we do that? So anyway.
Go for it. Everybody good with that, Mike, consensus? If you want to explore that a little bit, Andrew?
Yeah.
Bring back information.
Totally.
No problem.
Okay.
Don't, can't guarantee I'll do it, I'll have time to do it, but I'll try.
All right, that's why it's like, yeah, let's just get that crossed off the list and we can look into it too. But yeah, the county is the first, are they going to be amiable? I'm sure they will be. Any other councillor concerns online or otherwise?
Getting a judge? I'd even got me that time.